Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, welcome to the Cape Elizabeth School Board Budget Meeting. We are going to be reviewing sections of the proposed 2015-2016 School Board Budget. And since this is a finance-driven meeting, I'm turning the meeting over to our Finance Chair, Michael Moore.
Thanks, Joe. Welcome to the Second Budget Workshop for the 2015-2016 School Budget. I will quickly review the agenda for the workshop. Tonight, we will review staffing, salaries and benefits, Capelith with High School, Capelith with Middle School, Pond Cove, and instructional support. If you're unable to stay for the whole meeting, all the budget workshops are videotaped. Tonight's agenda will be as follows. First, we will welcome public comments on the agenda items I just discussed. I ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This will ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak. We will initially allocate 30 minutes to public comments. If there's a need for more time, the board can extend that time. Following public comments, the Superintendent will provide an overview of the budget, salaries and benefits and staffing, with building principals and administrators presenting their departmental budgets and narratives. Before we open up to public comment, I would like to share a section of the Cape Schools' Mission and Vision Statement. I read the Ethics portion of the Cape Schools' Mission and Vision Statement last night. It says, "We value decision-making and actions guided by principles of personal integrity, empathy, responsibility, and respect for self and others. These are the ethics we hope our students will develop and nurture." Keeping in mind these ethics as we proceed, should we be hard on the issues tonight? Absolutely. Should we be open to different views and perspectives, realizing that educating children can be challenging? Yes. Should all of us here tonight proceed with a commitment to respectful and thoughtful dialogue? I believe we should and hope that we do. Thank you, and I would like to open up the meeting for public comment. Please introduce yourself and try to limit your comments to three minutes. This will ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak. For those new to the public comment format, if your comments include specific questions, hopefully they will be addressed later tonight in the workshop as we review the topics on the agenda. If you feel your questions were not addressed in the workshop discussions, that will follow public comment. Or if you need more information on an issue, please email the board, or you can also go back and, if you're unable to stay the whole time, review the videotape of the budget workshop. So please let's get started. Whoever would, if there is a public comment, please step up to the podium and, if you'd be kind, just introduce yourself. And whoever wants to go first, feel free to start us off.
My name is Jennifer Brookings. Good evening. I am here tonight to share my concerns and questions I have as a parent of three children in the Cape Elizabeth School District. My intention for doing this is to be helpful and to be a responsible parent and district resident. I am concerned about the elimination of the special education teacher position. I understand it is currently a vacant spot as that teacher resigned in the fall. The Superintendent has been quoted saying the responsibilities from this position have been absorbed by other staff. Are these the same staff who will be taking on the responsibilities of the Instructional Support Director if the proposal to go half-time is approved? As a very aware and involved parent in the school district, I can tell you with confidence that staff already have too many responsibilities and they are overworked and overstressed. I can also tell you from my experience that staff is having a hard time with follow-up and follow-through with programs and communication with parents. I have had a difficult time getting meetings with staff in a timely manner. Emails and phone calls often go unanswered, and I often have to send follow-up inquiries. It can be weeks, even months, before issues we have agreed to become applied. This level of communication has declined each year. These teachers, staff, educators, and providers need our support and not be made to take on even more responsibilities. Service providers and educators have also had to take on the additional role of being case managers, roles that many of them are not qualified for. And some, excuse me, are constructing IEPs for children they don't teach or even see daily. I am aware of instances in which services are not being provided to students, services that have been agreed to in an IEP meeting by team and documented in the legal document of an IEP. This is a direct violation of our children's IEPs, and it is breaking special ed law. This is what is happening currently with a full-time instructional support director. I also want to ask another question that many other parents might have. Where are the funds to hire a much-needed full-time behaviorist? My son is being disciplined by the Vice Principal, who follows the school-wide color-coded system designed for typical behavioral issues. My son is exhibiting, the behaviors my son is exhibiting are symptoms of his autism. He should be getting treatment, therapy, and following a behavior plan with a qualified behaviorist. Is that my three minutes?
That was. I'm so sorry.
I'm going to finish. To help reduce his behaviors not being disciplined. My daughter, who also has a diagnosis of autism, has been suffering with the symptoms of PICA, a condition where a person will ingest non-food items. See, she is exhibiting this behavior at school. There is no behaviorist available to take data and address my daughter's behavior that can be dangerous and life-threatening. We have had full-time support in the past in the school district, and it was working. My children were progressing. My children were safe. Explain to me the logic of the elimination or not adding on a behaviorist position. I want to discuss the possibility that all of these responsibilities and jobs being delegated to other staff and service providers is a factor in why staff morale is exceptionally low, as shown in the recent employee survey report, a report that I am assuming all school members have seen. There has been a high turnover of staff in the last few years, especially in the Instructional Support Department. Most of those positions were held by staff who were well-regarded by their working peers, trusted and loved by parents, and had years of exceptional service with Cape. These staff have all resigned, and I can be pretty confident when I say the resignations have been a direct result of the cuts, changes in leadership in the Instructional Support Before I can support this proposed budget, I'm asking for additional and appropriate discussion time between administrators, school board members, and parents to address our many questions and rightful concerns. Thank you for allowing me this time to advocate for my children, the community of special education, and the amazing educators that work with my children, educators that we can't afford to lose any more of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
My name is Bill Gross. I live at 7 Seaview Avenue. And I'd like to start by saying that I've sent an email in, or several emails, into Michael Moore, and he's been very helpful in answering my questions and enlightening me on some of the things I didn't understand in the budget. Tonight, I want to talk about just three things on the budget. The first is the social work guidance expenses that are shown in the budget. I went through it, and under the individual budgets for Pond Cove, Middle School, and the High School, guidance/social work totaled $647,129. And then, in the instructional support portion of the budget, for the K through eight section of that, the social workers, psychology, speech and language, and occupational therapy totaled $476,791. And in the instructional support for nine through 12, the social work, psychology, speech, language, and occupational therapy totaled $232,168. The total for all three sections of the budget are $1,356,088. Now, this seems awfully high for social work, therapy-type of an expense, because obviously none of these dollars are doing anything as far as direct, doing nothing directly to improve the reading level and math ability of our students. And during, when the school board is going through this budget, it would be helpful to me if they could explain the relationship. Number one, some of these, I suspect, are required by law, and they're not optional. And I'd like to have that pointed out when you go through the budget. And secondly, if there's any way you can relate the dollars we spend on social work guidance and these various types of therapies and the improvement in the educational performances of the students, then it would be easier to swallow $1,300,000 in tax money going for them. The second point I want to talk about is the volunteer coordinator position. This year, the volunteer coordinator is retiring, and it seems to me this would be an opportune time to take a look at the position and see if we can eliminate it. In the budget, there's a total of $67,206 for the volunteer coordinator position, and I believe there'd also be some, some of the duties will be slightly expanded for that position. Now, I'm a volunteer. I've been volunteering here in Cape Elizabeth for five years as a physics tutor, and I want to share with you my schedule this week as a volunteer. And this will help explain why I don't believe we really need this position. So today, in the High School, during Period Six, I tutored two ninth graders in honors physics. And in Period Seven, I tutored one senior in AP Physical Calculus. Tomorrow, during Period Four, I'll be tutoring one student in, a ninth grader in honors physics. And in Period Eight, two ninth graders in honors physics. And in Period Six, three ninth graders in honors physics. And on Thursday, I'll be, Period Four, I'll be tutoring one ninth grader in honors physics. And in Period Seven, I'll be tutoring one twelfth grader in AP Physical Calculus. And in Eighth Period, I'll be tutoring one ninth grader in honors physics. Now, all of these students, how, I'm tutoring them when they're having their study periods. And all of the scheduling is done by myself and the physics teachers and sometimes a guidance counselor who would refer a student to me. It's my responsibility to go out and find a classroom. If the physics classroom is empty during a student's study period, I use the physics classroom. If it's not, I go out and find another room down the hall or use the Achievement Center. Now, the point I'm making is I do all of this on my own. In five years of volunteering, I've met with the volunteer coordinator one time, the first meeting, when I had to go to the class where they tell me any information I learned about a student is private and I can't share it with anyone. So for five years, I've been doing this type of work. I suspect I'm doing more coordinating, scheduling, and spending more hours, and all of this is volunteering. I'm a tutor, but I don't charge anything for it.
Bill.
I'm 100 percent of a volunteer. So...
Bill, I don't want, I want to give you enough time, maybe just to talk on Point Three, and then we want to make sure there's enough opportunities.
All right.
But first of all, thank you so much for volunteering.
Well, you're welcome. My only point is if I can do all this without a volunteer coordinator, I expect all the other many volunteers we have in the school system can do the same thing without a volunteer coordinator.
If you could briefly hit Point Three.
Briefly, my last point, oh, actually, I'll skip the last one, because it would take a little bit more time, and I'll leave time for other people to speak.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Hi, my name is John Volts, and I'm a parent of a childhood in the Pond Cove and at the Middle School. And I'm here also to speak again about the Instructional Support Budget. I got to say, when I looked at the overall budget, if I were sitting in your shoes, I was a little bit surprised, because I read over the budget summary, and it didn't seem to make sense to me, because there were a few changes called out. In fact, we sort of looked at the overall level of what the student population is and how it's stabilizing, going down a little bit. And there was a lot of ink to basically looking to eliminate a half a teacher position at the High School. And then, when I looked at the Instructional Support Budget and looked at what's going on there, it didn't seem to make sense. As I look at it, as I saw the budget, overall, it's going up a few percent. And then, if you actually account for the significant reduction in debt service of about half a million dollars, it's going up about 1.1 billion on a baseline. Overall, so overall, everything's rising about 5 percent in the total budget from last year, including the debt service. And you've got the student populations going down by about 2.8 percent or something like that, and the budget's going up a little bit. But when you look at the Instructional Support and Special Ed segment of the budget, the population is dropping by about 4 percent, a few students. But the reduction seems to be drastically not commensurate with that same percentage drop. And there's no background and no data that says, number one, we think we already are doing a sufficient job, so even holding it evens the right number. But it's a significantly lower number than in an overall rising budget. It stands out to me like a sore thumb, and I don't understand it. And I want to know that you guys understand the data and the performance that backs that up. And then, I'd like to say a little bit of word to put special education a little bit in context. I've had my son in special education for a long time now, and one of the things that I learned is it's not just about those 150 kids who are in special education. And to view it that way is really missing the point, because I know that some of the things, the ports that were put in place specifically for him as required in his IEP helped a lot of other students in his class. Very simple example, when he was in kindergarten in a different state, they just put up a written guideline for this is the schedule for the day. Helped many, many other students know what's coming next, help with the transitions, and all of that added to the learning. So if you're viewing this just as those 150 kids, you're missing the boat. It's really about the entire learning environment. And I would say, I looked at this, and I know, I feel like the staff that we're having now, similarly, they don't have the time to respond to things appropriately and follow up on things appropriately. And seeing further reductions in the feet on the ground who have to service this that is far beyond the reduction in the population concerns me greatly. And I would also say, this is one of those things where everybody's a hero, cutting costs in the short term, but this one's a little bit more like aircraft maintenance. You know, we didn't rehire the guy who de-iced the planes, and we saved a lot of money in the short run. But guess what? When there's a problem, it's a big one, and it's expensive. So I would urge that you get the data that supports this drop in the budget in an overall perspective of a rising budget and a small drop in student population. I don't feel the data that I've seen supports that. And when it comes time for the final review, I will expect to know that you have seen that and reviewed it thoroughly.
Thank you very much.
My name is Michelle Kane, and I have three daughters in the Cape School System, two at Middle and one in Pond Cove. And I did email the board and Superintendent a detailed letter today regarding the proposed cuts to the instructional support program. Three minutes isn't enough time to go through everything, so I would appreciate if somebody would respond to the questions that I don't, that aren't hit tonight. That would be wonderful. I want to thank you all for providing all the detailed information on the website. It was very helpful. And I'm just going to call Instructional Support IS to make it quicker, but IS students are a minority in our Cape, in our schools. But all students are impacted by IS cuts, as my predecessor just said. And our school budget should be focused on all of our students and ensuring that their needs are met. I have three points I'd like to address. First, the projected 4 percent decrease in students in the IS program, approximately five students. And I want to ask how that justifies reducing the IS director position from full-time to part-time and eliminating a IS teacher and ed tech position. This should not be about the numbers of students but about their needs. Numbers are numbers. I mean, the numbers don't justify it anyway, I think, but what are the needs of the students in our district? How many services does each child in instructional support get? How many hours do they deserve? Have you considered each IEP in proposing these staff reductions? And is it conceivable at all that their needs could be met with these cuts? Absorbing the duties of a IS teacher and ed tech has not been successful in my experience, particularly this past year. We need a full-time behaviorist to properly develop, adjust, and monitor our children's plans to meet their needs, so they don't fall behind academically, socially, emotionally. Some of our children, IS, I can't remember, but yeah, help academically raise our scores. You know, I don't like that whole, I didn't like that argument, sorry. But a lot of, you know, our students, they're different, but not less. Thank you. And we just don't want them to fall behind. The existing staff and administration that are already being asked to absorb the duties of those two positions, it's not working well. They're overworked, and they're not meeting the needs of our students. And I'm wondering, just who benefits from reducing this director position to part-time? I don't see the students, the staff, the administrators, anybody benefiting. So I'm just trying to figure out where this is coming from. And please consider the vast implications in other places if we do cut these positions, including the director and half and the teacher. Our principals and our staff aren't all trained and experienced IS directors or behaviorists. Second, I'd like to address the dollar amounts involved and offer some alternative solutions, options to reducing our budget without inevitably impacting our IS budget. The school website indicates that the proposed budget cut to IS staff is $129,174. That makes up 80 percent of the total staff cuts in all of our schools. And I want to know how this will benefit the IS students, the staff, and administration, and the entire Cape School population. And I'm praying that these cuts can be made elsewhere and taken from our, my God, what is that budget? 112. I can't remember. Please consider instead cutting perhaps the $35,000 HR generalist position that really is a position that benefits the town, not the students. Doesn't have a direct impact on our students, and I feel like it should be a town expense. Second, this $30,000 Innovation Scheme budget, I don't, I just don't see how this is necessary. Teachers in the past, if they have ideas, they can apply for grants, and I just don't see how this has a direct impact on our students and, you know, who it benefits. It's just a lot of money for that. Third, is redesigning the school website for 20 grand. To me, that seems like it wouldn't have a direct impact on our students. The website's working fine, in my opinion. It works great to prepare for this meeting. And maybe they could apply for a seed grant if they want to include it, or maybe we have somebody in our community who knows how to do this and would volunteer their time at pre or at a reduced cost. So that's the money. Third, I just ask that you consider our staff and administration in all these decisions. You know, four years ago, we went through this. A significant number of ed techs were eliminated and supposed to be replaced by teacher positions. And we had these four teacher positions put in place and a consultant, and I have no idea where those are now. They seem to be, they seem to have vanished. And the behaviorist, we had, I think we have a full-time behaviorist that's supposed to be on staff, that she's out on maternity leave, and she hasn't been here all year, and there's been no replacement. And then, over the past couple of weeks, they hired a consultant, who I believe is going to be in the school for three hours a week. She also has a full-time job elsewhere, and I do not see how that's going to meet the needs of our 150, 650-plus instructional support students. They need to be, a behaviorist needs to be in the classroom or meet with the students, get to know the students, spend time with them, work with their team, gain an understanding of what's needed to help them. These kids, they're all so different. And we, I just would like the staffing decisions to be based on the students' needs, not just numbers. And consider the staff and administration when you make the decisions. I feel like they're overworked, and I want them to stay. They're phenomenal. I want to improve their morale. I want to reduce their workload. I don't want them looking for employment elsewhere. Also, we have to consider how we're going to attract any new innovative, talented staff to come to Cape with the continuing elimination of IS positions. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jeanie Steinis. I live on Paul Hill. And I'm here in reference to my grandson. He is a child with autism. He's in the third grade. His mom and his brother live in the, and I am just tired of hearing of cutting stuff for children with special needs. I know a few people have a problem with this, but I do. I mean, these children need help. And the cutting here, cutting there, I mean, last year, you took bus number five. That was, and that was a big cut right there. Nobody, that was the last minute, bus number five was cut that picked up all the children with special need. Now, my grandson goes to school, and how he goes to school? I drive him to school, and I pick him up. On another bus, and then I asked, what if in case of an emergency that I can't bring him to school? What happens then? And I was told that we have to give a week's notice. I didn't, I didn't know that an emergency concerns a week's notice. Does that make sense to you? An emergency is an emergency. So it's a good thing my car's working fine, but, I mean, and bus number six, and they told me they needed to put a net tech on bus number six. That's the week's notice, so they can get a net tech on bus number six, so he would have to take bus number six. Well, bus number six has a fantastic driver, from what I understand, has two kids on there that I can tell you are bullies, other kids. I refuse to put my grandson on that bus. And the thing is, I don't think a net tech would be able to be that protective over bullying. And children with special need have a problem with loud noise. And I hear the bus coming from way down the street with all the kids screaming and hollering. Can you imagine children with disability on that bus? That is not, that's not adequate at all. So, I mean, you guys been cutting this, cutting that, cutting, I am tired of the cutting. We had a principal, Tom, which you all know him, I'm sure. He was a principal here at Pond Cove for many years. He never had an assistant principal. He was able to manage a job by himself and did a fantastic job, from what I understand. Now, no offense to the assistant principal, but the thing is, I don't see that we need an assistant principal. That would be a nice big cut from the budget, right there. Because the thing is, there's not that much work to be done when a principal cannot do it herself. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe Whalen, and I have two daughters in the school system, one in seventh grade and one in third grade. And what I'd like to address is my daughter who's in third grade, who is, you know, in special education, special needs. And my remarks aren't as specific. I would have been more specific, but I think most of that has been covered. One of my biggest concerns is that we were promised three years ago that one of our, one of the big concerns of the parents at the time was communication and poor communication between the school system and what was happening and the parents. And we were told that the parents would have more involvement, and that just hasn't happened. I mean, if I didn't hear via an email, I wouldn't even have known to come to this meeting that this would have been open. I think the communication has actually gone away from as poor as it was three years ago. It's actually decreased. Couple points in terms of communication. You know, when we look at what is being cut, my questions are, why is it being cut? Who decides what is being cut? I mean, all... I mean, ultimately, not the person that decides, all right, we're going to take a red, red pen and cross that out. But what's the thought process? Is it research-based? Are there interviews? Are parents involved? You know, do they say, you know, a behaviorist is not necessary because of what? Is that based on state research, national research? None of that stuff is communicated. Give you a simple example. And on Fridays, my daughter would swim every Friday afternoon. And that just went away. And my daughter would wake up in the morning and say, every day she wakes up, she says, what day is it? And when we said Friday, she said, oh, I have swimming today. Well, swimming just went away. And no one ever explained why it went away. And I can't see any cost associated to that. And I understand this concern, you know, that budgets are a reality, that things will be cut. But I'd just like more communication on why. And if the school board and beyond know the impact that those cuts would have. Now, I do applaud the 50% reduction into director position. You know, all right, if we're going to eliminate the 50%, you know, but why does that money come out of the budget? When you make a decision like that, shouldn't that money stay in the budget to, you know, to the people that are, that are really doing the work every day? Shouldn't that get reallocated for that? That's that kind of, that's when a decision like that, when that's made, it should be reallocated to the people who are doing the work. Now, I see some of the people who have actually worked with both of my daughters here, and they work really hard. And I'd just like to end by saying, if you, if you want to spend a couple hours getting to understand what their day is like, you know, go in there and you'll see how difficult it is. You know, and they make my job at home a lot easier because they, they're doing all the hard work all day long. And again, most of the, most of the things that, the specific things have been said, but I'd just like, you know, to, to end where I began in that the communication, I would just appreciate the communication on what's happening. That's what we were promised. We were promised communication on strategy, on personnel, on all of those decisions going forward, and we just haven't heard it. And, and as you know, when communication is lacking, creates a vacuum. And so you get rumor, you get, you know, almost parrot delay. Things are going to happen, this is going to happen. And then the communication is, you know, miscommunication, which leads to a lot of angst and a decrease in morale. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, John.
Hi, my name is Michelle Ashford. I have a daughter in fifth grade and has special needs. And I'm going to be brief. I just have two questions. I don't really do my homework and blow those all these people. My, my first one, and I think it might have been addressed in the last meeting, but if you could re, kind of go over where this half-position salary is going to be allocated to. And I don't, I think I had a couple of different versions on where that was going, so that would be great to hear that. And my second concern would be, you know, we're talking about a lot of cuts and stuff, but I think we also need to focus on what we actually have right now. And my biggest concern would be, it's my understanding that we have a salary OT position that's supposed to be here four times, I mean, five days a week, and is, is only here four because they've been allocated in a Portland school that has nothing to do with Cape students. It's kind of an area of concern for me. And I think I'm hearing that there's actually a speech therapist that might be doing that as well. So that's kind of, that would be my second concern. I'd just like to be talked about if we could. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Deb Patri. I have two boys in the school system, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. The one in fifth grade has an IEP, and we've been here for five years, six years, I guess, including kindergarten. And it's just felt like a slow erosion of services over time. I felt like it was a rich program when we showed up, and then it's just been downhill from there. I, the people who work with my son on a daily basis are fantastic, but they're overworked. And to say that it's okay for them to absorb that one teacher's instructional support, support teacher's position and be okay with that, I think is absurd. Because what that person did before them was amazing and brought a lot to our instructional support system as a whole. And the numbers just don't make sense, like other people here have, have mentioned. The percent decline in the population of, of kids with needs does not correlate with the percent increase in cuts. And so I ask that you reconsider some of your options. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marcia Chase, and I teach French and Spanish at Pond Cove Elementary School. I'm here just to make the public aware of cuts that have been made to the World Language Program over the past several years. We have indeed extended instruction to first grade, but it's been done at a time when there's been a reduction in staffing. The history of our staffing is that in the 2013 to 14 school year, we had six full-time teachers at Pond Cove, between Pond Cove and the middle school. The year after that, 2013 to 14, we had our position, our staffing decreased by half-position, but a full grade level of teaching responsibilities was added. This year, we have had, we are still at 5.5 teachers, but yet another grade level has been added, first grade. So we have indeed extended World Language to the younger grades, and that is wonderful. However, it's done, is we really need more staffing, more funding for staffing in order for the program to have the impact that we hope, we would hope it would have on language competency. Currently, I teach at Pond Cove. I teach close to 500 students. I am a traveling teacher. I teach eight classes a day. And I move between, among 23 classrooms in a week. What this means when instruction is stretched over a large number of students is that the contact time is reduced. And this is key to language proficiency, which is one of our goals. In first grade currently, due to many factors, we have two 15-minute classes which meet over the course of six days. Which is, it's great, but it's not the contact time that really studies show children need. No matter how young the student is, it's not magic. If we were talking about true language immersion, where there is contact every day for a number of hours, that's when young children really can benefit. But two 15-minute meetings over the course of a six-day schedule is, is not sufficient, in my view, to really achieve the goals that, that we need. And this has happened really across the board. In the past, we had had at least three contact times in a five-day schedule for grades two, three and four. All of that has been reduced to two contact times over a six-day schedule. With snow days and other interruptions and things of that sort, we also had makeup days in the past. That's not possible because of the tight teacher scheduling. So days that are lost are simply lost. I calculated by counting the number of hours I used to see students, we've gone from about 32 hours of instructional time for students at Pond Cove in the course of a year to perhaps 25. It's significant. So you can imagine, that's the course over an entire year to really accomplish quite a daunting curriculum. So that's, I figure, you know, it's a reduction of about a quarter to a third instruction time. The foundation of language proficiency is daily contact. So the best scenario, I would say, is at least to move back to staffing that would provide for three contact times in a five-day period. And this is not what an immersion program, an immersion program is meeting every single day. So even if we were to do language entirely in the language, it's still not sufficient for children to really gain, make the gains that we're hoping they should make. This is based on research that comes in national standards that come out of, come to us showing that what plus programs, which is what we have here in Cape, should be a minimum of three contact times in five days, 90 minutes a week, minimum, for minimum competency. And we are looking at almost high intermediate proficiency for our students. So time, it's all about time. We have the program, but we, the time's not, we've built into it. We need more staffing.
Thank you, Marcia.
My voice is a little weak. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rosemary Ginn, and I'm a literacy specialist at Pond Cove. And tonight, I'm here to represent the staff at Pond Cove. Kelly and Julie, a couple months ago, gave the staff an opportunity to talk about the culture in our school. And we had more than one meeting to discuss what was positive and what our challenges were. And from those meetings, we created a moving forward team and trying to address the culture within our schools. As a result of those meetings, the staff gave to me and to a couple other representatives a very long list of their concerns. And what I did, and it took many hours, not that I need saying that, but I think it's important to understand the hours that it took for me to collate all of their comments into some kind of working document. And we created, or this document called What Is Getting in the Way of Effectiveness and Impact with Students? And so when Meredith came to meet with us, we presented her with this document, of which I have copies, if any of you would like to see it. And we talked about what we felt were challenges within our school. And the one that, there were three, but the one that I want to refer to tonight is the second one that we had. And that was reduction in critical staffing. And for us at Pond Cove, the reduction of the behavior strategist has had a huge impact on all of us, regular education staff and special education staff. We wrote that the impact was that special education and regular education teachers are trying to provide appropriate behavioral interventions without adequate behavioral training, experience, or background. Students with significant emotional and behavioral needs do not have a behavior strategist working consistently and directly with them. There is less time for targeted instruction and monitoring progress toward IEP goals as well as regular education student goals. Educational support teachers and staff are often pulled to handle a behavior, for example, or to monitor a child on the playground. The second staffing that we were concerned about was the Pond Cove Special Education Strategist. We felt that the impact are that our special educators in our building are spending many extra hours beyond their working day on IEP administration, paperwork, and documentation. So they have little time to meet or train with the current ed techs. Then our third concern was over ed techs. The impact from the input from the staff was that highly qualified teachers are spending hours each week on the playground, lunchroom, bus duties, copying materials. And they have far less time to focus on teaching, implementing initiatives, collaboration, professional conversations. Because the ed techs are often pulled to cover teachers during IEPs, or they're pulled for this, and the whole process becomes very challenging. But one of our greatest concerns is over the RTI implementation. We feel very strongly that to meet the needs of our changing demographics and the challenging learning and behavior concerns, we requested that we have an ed tech per-grade level to help provide with tier-two support. Because the specialists that people often refer to in our schools are providing tier-three with more and more one-on-one students because their needs are so significant. But also within RTI is the behavior strategist reduces our ability to fully implement because in RTI, there's a whole piece that's dedicated to behavior, tier-one, tier-two, tier-three. And that's become increasingly more difficult for us to address. So in conclusion, what I'd like to say is, there have been no conversations around the impact that district decisions have on the time and effort that people have made to strengthen our schools and provide for our students. People feel that what they have done does not matter or is valued. These staffing reductions reinforce this. Over the last few years, each budget round brings further reduction in staffing and resources. Numbers do not tell the whole picture of the demands on staff and the impact on students. When numbers dictate decisions, people lose faith and trust that what they've spent years building is no longer valued. Putting money into new initiatives without any conversation to what people believe is important or needed further reinforces the lack of trust and belief that their expertise is valued. Cape Elizabeth has the capacity for excellence. If this path of reduction continues, it will be hard to close the achievement gap and achieve that level of excellence. We encourage you to look beyond the numbers and to invest in our student needs, ensuring their achievement and success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've gone almost about 45 minutes. Maybe we'll have opportunity for, if there's one last. I think I saw someone that wanted to speak, so we don't want to cut anybody off who was in, in the lineup, so.
When my son, who's now in third grade, first started at, can you?
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. My name is Audra Welton. And when my son first started at Pond Cove, he was part of a program that allowed him to learn French five days a week. And it was a highlight for him. And it was an area that he excelled in. Reading was a bit of a challenge, writing was a bit of a challenge, math was a bit of a challenge, but language really came to him, and it gave him confidence. And at home, he was speaking in French. And thankfully, I know a little bit. And so it increased his confidence. And you know, this year, he came home, there were two things that he cried about most every night. And one was French. Guess it's not my thing anymore. Like, he didn't understand why he wasn't allowed to have French five days a week or three days a week anymore. Why could he not do that? And the other thing he cried about was, why could he not eat snack with his class? It took him over a month to be able to verbalize what was going on. And then I pursued with emails and calls, trying to understand, what is my child talking about not able to eat snack with his classmates? And that's when I found out that in order to receive his instructional support, the schedule was requiring that he be pulled out of snack time, he was still eating snack in the hallway. I want to encourage these decisions about the budget to be made on facts. There needs to be an internal audit on the actual facts of how these IEPs are being and not being. Like, I truly believe that there are more violations going on than you realize. So once I found out that he had been eating every single day in the hallway not to receive services, it wasn't to receive services, it was because of the way the schedule went. I got the runaround for additional weeks and months. He only just recently has been changed so that the three kids, he wasn't the only one, three children alone in the hallway with an adult eating. It boggles my mind. I'm new to this. I'm new to the IEP. It took us a little while to realize that my son needed one, and that that would be what could help with his reading and writing. And I'm so thankful for the people who work with him directly. I see overstretched, I see lack of communication as something as basic as what is my son's schedule? That is unacceptable. So I'm new to this, and I please hope that you would base this on facts. Do an internal audit, be honest. You will find there's way more there that is positive and that is very horrifying that's happening right here in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll close the public comment. But like I said initially, we'll be here probably for another, you know, two and a half hours. So if you have a question and you're not able to stay and hear us discuss it, you know, please contact the school board. The video is available online for tonight. And ultimately, feel free to reach out and email us, and we'll follow up, as we do to all emails we receive regarding inquiries or contact with the school board. So we'll move now, the superintendent will review the main drivers of the salary and benefits, and then we'll move into narrative presentation by building principals and administrators.
Thank you, Michael. So here, in person, last week, I'll just sort of start at the top by indicating that the total expenditure increase for the budget is a total of 2.6%. Of that, that's a net tax of 1.5%, which for a $314,000 home is an increase of 0.7% on taxes, or 12 cents per $1,000 of valuation. Now, as we look at the overall increases, salaries and benefits is a $716,624 increase, or a 3.9% increase over the last year. For our teacher salaries, that represents a 2.5% increase in their base rate of pay, driven by the collective bargaining agreement, as well as steps for teachers and lane changes as appropriate. In addition, we've budgeted an 8% increase in health insurance benefits. We don't know those numbers typically at this time of year. We often don't find those out until late April, and the range can vary considerably. I think the top percentage increase for districts across the state last year was roughly 13%. We've also seen an increase in retirement benefits. The state cost for retirement increased from 2.65% to 3.36%. So our district's contribution to state employee retirement has increased by that amount. And you'll also remember that we experienced a couple of years ago, a cost shift in teacher retirement, which previously was funded entirely at the state level, and those funds moved into the local district. And that percentage, as our salaries have increased, that cost to us has increased as well. So that represents roughly, the benefits piece is roughly about $225,000 of that total increase of $700,000. So shifting to the proposed staffing changes, and we'll talk about these in more detail sort of by building. But based on enrollment, we proposed a reduction in staffing of one teacher at Pond Cove, as well as a reduction in staffing of one teacher at Cape Elizabeth Middle School. We'll talk about preschool staffing, I think, and we'll talk about instructional support at the end of the evening. We've proposed an increase for a drama teacher position at Cape Elizabeth High School. As noted and discussed earlier, and again, we'll return to this at the end of the meeting, a reduction of one teacher and one educational technician in instructional support, an increase of a .2 gifted and talented teacher. So that's the first time that will have appeared in our local budget. That's a new program for us. Last year, we funded summer school salaries entirely out of carryover funds from last year. So again, summer school salaries are a first-time addition to our budget. Again, as mentioned earlier, there's a halftime human resources specialist position that will be shared with the town, and we'll, again, we'll go into detail about all of these, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but just to give the broad. Reduced, as Mr. Gross pointed out, the volunteer services coordinator position, but we have expanded the responsibilities of that job in accordance with the strategic plan. And the position proposed is a volunteer and extended learning opportunity coordinator position. We've proposed a reduction of the halftime administrative support person who works with our nurses in the health offices, and the halftime reduction in the director of inspectional support position. So the total change in those reductions for salaries is a decrease of $151,000, or a decrease of three and a half positions over current year budget. And the details of those are sort of laid out on the next page in your binder, and you can follow along sort of the historical staffing numbers if there are questions about those Just want to point out, and I know there are a number of questions, and so we'll return to this along the way and throughout the evening, I'm sure. There was one question about instructional support in terms of the overall increase. The special education budget overall, staffing, salaries, and benefits for next year is $4,932,007. That represents actually a net increase of $7,780. So despite the fact that there are some reductions, there are increases in that budget overall. So I think we're going to transition to the high school.
Yes. Thank you for going through the staffing changes. The thought is when we have building principals, we'll go through their narrative to give us a context for, you know, some of these changes. So hopefully, the most efficient format would be, I believe Jeff is going to present the high school, so if the board would be willing to let him go through his narrative and discuss some of the changes, and then after he's done with that, we could, you know, ask questions. And that way, given we tend to ask a lot of questions, that'll at least give the administrators an opportunities to go through their narratives. And then we can ask questions and then go through the non-salaries portion of the budget, which is included under the tabs in the binder. So Jeff, you can have the floor.
Sure. Thank you. And I'm not going to hit a lot of the things in the budget. I think a lot of them are self-explanatory. Just to spend a few minutes hitting what I think are a few highlights. And then I've gotten a few questions from Meredith over the past couple of days, and I'm going to try to hit, hopefully, all of those to some extent. And then whatever questions the board members have now would be great. I don't have a long presentation. I would just say that on the non-salaries side of the high school budget, the proposal is a net increase of $33,238. Again, that's the non-salaries side of the budget, a proposed increase of $33,238, of which the two major drivers of that total non-salaries and benefits increase is the cost of, the increased numbers of students who are going to the Portland Arts and Technology High School, or PATHS. So of that total, $33,200 roughly, just a shade over $14,500 is due to an increase in the PATHS expenditures, which is a result of the formula that PATHS uses to allocate their costs among the various sending schools. The other biggest driver of the $33,238 in non-salaries increase is a one-time charge for next year related to our New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation visit, which is going to be happening in just about a year from now. So a team of fifteen educators comes to Cape Elizabeth, looks at our schools, looks at our self-study report that we're in the middle of preparing this year, arrives at its own conclusions, and the costs for that are primarily, or the new costs for that are primarily around housing and feeding for the members of that team. So the cost for that is $13,400. Again, that is a once-in-every-ten-years cost that high schools bear. It's actually, I think, a pretty modest expense compared to what I've seen with some visiting teams, and that really is in large part due to the generosity of the In by the Sea in being willing to give us, our team. Fortunately, it's mud season from their standpoint, so there's probably some advantage to them, but they've been willing to give us some substantial discounts. So the balance of the increase on the non-salaries side is a total in the high school of $5,311. It's spread around in different bits and pieces here and there, and I thought what I would do is just highlight a few things. So you turn beyond my narrative, beyond the high school narrative, and these may not be in order, but I'll try to, on the first page of the high school narrative, the high school spreadsheet, I'm sorry, there's a, there are two lines for high school instructional technology. And you'll see one of those lines has an increase that as a percentage basis is a significant increase. What the real dollar increase is, is $5,345 for software. That is attributable to two purchases that are proposed, and one is for $500 to support our AP calculus students, and the other one is to purchase AutoCAD software as we evolve our drafting program from hands, I'm not sure what you call it.
Manual.
Manual, manual system of drafting to a more computer-based system. And that cost for that AutoCAD software is $4,195. There are a number of increases that, again, on a percentage basis, if not on an absolute dollar basis, are a little higher, and so the board may have some questions about them. There are a few in the library lines, which are also on the first page of the high school spreadsheet. So for example, there's a $2,000 increase for electronic database subscriptions. I can give the board any details beyond what I'm going to tell you right now, but that's largely to support the policy projects that students do in World History II as sophomores, and it's to purchase some specialized databases around history topics and current events and world issues topics. There's a couple of different subscriptions that Carolyn, who's the librarian and learning center specialist here, is proposing. There's a books and periodicals increase, again, of $2,000, that on a percentage basis, it's a little higher than some other lines. On an absolute dollar basis, it's $2,000 in the budget, and that is to fund the purchase of a program called Overdrive. Thank you, because I'm getting verification from Ruth Allen, who knows the budget and this side of it just as well, if not better than I do. But Overdrive allows students access to eBooks and various electronic digital media for books and magazines and those sorts of things. So there's those, a couple of things. And really, that's about it. One other item that I did highlight, well, I'll get to textbooks, because David had a number of questions about textbooks. And I don't have all the information, but I can get all the information about the textbook specifics. But there was one other sort of one-time item related to our ceramics room, which is the replacement of a small kiln. We have a large kiln to support our ceramics program, and a small kiln. And the small kiln has reached the point that cars tend to reach where you pour a lot of money into it to keep it going, and after a while, it just doesn't make any sense. So there's a one-time purchase of just about $2,300 for the small kiln. So now what I thought I would do is turn to some specific questions that I have. And I don't have all the answers to the questions, but I'll at least touch on them. And then the ones that I have to gather a little bit of information for, I'll get those to you. Around high school textbooks, that's the area, I didn't get this question until fairly late today, so by that time, some of the teachers who can provide.
It's my fault, Jeff.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm not, but I can easily get that information, that's fine. But I do have the numbers in terms of the specific textbook selections that I highlighted in the budget. There's a proposal to replace the AP statistics textbook, the total, for that replacement is $9,030. There's a proposal to replace honors bio textbooks, honors biology textbooks for eleventh graders. The total of that purchase is $88,190. And there's a proposal to replace, to begin the replacement of our honors US history textbooks, and that's for a total of $6,175. I don't have the specifics of the age of those textbooks and that sort of stuff. I can easily get that within the next day or two. I will say typically, we don't replace books unless they're at least five years old. Typically, they're significantly older than that, but I have to get the specifics about these specific texts, and I certainly will do that. Okay. So I'm just going to go through some, there were a couple of sets of questions that came across, and a number of questions about, that I think indirectly relate to the proposed reduction in the halftime administrative secretarial position to support the school nurses district-wide. That person is housed in the high school for most of her time, but it is a district-wide position. The work of, you know, a couple of years ago, we did reduce that full-time position to a halftime position. And then we recently reduced another position, because there used to be a, I'm not going to give, there was another secretarial position that was reduced as well. I would say that we're functioning, we're functioning well now. I would say there may be some capacity to absorb some of the loss for the halftime nurses position. What we have to do, and I'm starting to meet with some of the guidance staff next week to look at sort of how the somewhat slow times in guidance correspond to the times when there's a particular demand in the nurses' office. So I have, I have some thinking to do and some examination to do around that topic.
I just want to add to that for a minute, Jeff, as well, because I did meet with our nurses.
Yes.
Just to address the district-wide piece of that, I did meet with our nurses today to discuss their concerns a little bit around this issue. And some of the concerns were around, gosh, you know, we really relied on that person when we've been in the midst of screenings. So we talked about some options for how to address screening times. For example, bringing in substitutes to increase our substitute nurse pool considerably over the last couple of years, and having a substitute available so that they are freed up to concentrate on the screening was one of the options that we discussed. They discussed concerns about some of the data entry and peak times. For example, at the elementary school, that's around when you have kindergarten registration and you're inputting all the new health forms for those incoming students. Screening times, and at the high school around sort of the athletic time periods, when all those health forms for athletic participation are due. So we had a good conversation about those options. And I think I've heard from building administrators generally that they feel that there's some capacity to potentially absorb some of those pieces, including ordering of supplies, which is one of the concerns that was raised as well. And that, you know, I think reasonably, with some substitute support and some coordination, we should be able to address most of those concerns, but we'll be continuing to look at it as we look through the process.
So another question that came to me from a board member is essentially whether the reduction, the proposed reduction in the halftime administrative support position connected to the health offices in the three schools will result in a concern about harming the most vulnerable population. And I can't predict exactly what public outcry there might be, but I wouldn't think so, because my understanding of the context, my recollection of the context for that concern a couple of years ago, when it was about replacing a fully licensed school nurse with a paraprofessional. And this is a quite different, I think the concern will be more along the lines of what Meredith has mentioned, which is around keeping up with a lot of the records, the inputting, the screening, the data, and that sort of stuff. And I don't mean to suggest that that's not important. It is critically important, and it's, some of it is very time-dependent and that sort of thing. But I think it's a pretty different issue that the board is facing now with that one. There was, there is a question about how many foreign students, which I took to mean exchange students, how many exchange students we have each year. Typically, we allow up to four students, foreign student students in the high school. It's very much dependent, and we like to have that number or close to that number. It's very much dependent, and we like to have that number or close to that number, because there is some benefit for the students and for our, and for our Cape Elizabeth students to have sort of a critical mass of foreign student students. It is very dependent on families being willing to open their doors and making that commitment. So this year, we only able to have two foreign student students. Last, the last couple of years, we've had four, and my hope is we, we will get back to four again for next year, because I think that's a nice number to have. So how many students, is another question, are able to access classes online with our current subscription, or what is our current capacity for allowing students to access online classes? And the real answer is that we don't have any capacity issue, because really, we don't have, we as a school don't have a subscription. And right now, the cost for online, we are not a part of the virtual high school consortium. We were for a couple of years, and we found that it was a significantly underutilized resource. Perhaps that's something we would want to revisit in the future, but that proposal is not in the budget. Typically, our families access one of several online programs that we have found are quality programs that are quite inexpensive, and so the cost of participating in those online programs, at least at the present, is borne by, borne by families. So there really isn't a limit. Then, received another set of questions today, and I'll answer those that are sort of questions. So one of the questions was about the increase in cost of substitute teachers over the last year or two. And really, my, I think that that really is simply to bring the budget line more in sync with what the actual expenses have been the last couple of years.
That's accurate, as well as the discussion around increasing the base rate of pay for substitutes.
Okay, yes, yes, thank you. So I think that's really what that is. It's not, it's not a expected increase in the number of songs we will get, or anything about our, the vacancy of, the absences of our teachers, it's not driven by that in any way. What is the appropriate teacher load for foreign language and other subjects, and are we exceeding it? And I, and I know that's prompted by, there's a table in my narrative that sort of, that shows what the average teacher load is in each of our, by department, in each one of our departments, and foreign language is definitely on the high side. My recollection of foreign language, I think, is 91.1, I believe. That is slightly in excess of the guideline that the board set several years ago in policy IIB, which is, there's a guideline of 75 to 90 students. Foreign language is the one area where we are, we are very slightly above that, at 91.1. And I know that's, that topic has been a general discussion at the board in past budget meetings and that sort of thing, so I'm not sure I need to go into more depth about that in this context, but that, that's, that's that area. I real, oh, there's a question about, I wrote in the narrative about the possibility of an increase in our choral length, choral music position by one semester section, which would translate into a .1 increase in terms of that position, that's dependent on signups. And so, and it was, it was a good question, and it caused me to go back to the staffing page, and I just want to point one thing out if you, if the board, if you go back to staff, salaries and benefits, that tab, on the very first page, on that page, it's, there is, it's called teacher drama, are folks with me there? That amount there is actually enough to support the increase in the drama position by .1, which is an increase we experienced this year, and I expect will continue to, will persist again next year, and also to increase the choral music position by that .1. So that, that number really covers it, and we'll have to clean up the, exactly the way it's delineated, but that, that number is enough to cover that, should we get enough signups to increase the choral music by one tenth as well. Then, let's see, the other questions, get to the text issues, and I will, I will get to those text issues, and I will get that, get that to you in the next couple of days. The last question is about a percentage increase that stands out in the high school budget, and that's, if I can, back to the high school budget page, non-salaries, the second page. I think it's the second page. Yes, the second page, total high school administration, which is the first major division up at the top, the very last line under that, which is account 8920, 8100 dues and fees, there's an increase that's, that is very substantial, it's 98.29 percent. The total increase is $12,913, and that is because that's where those NEAS fees for the, for the visit are part. Actually, if you backed that amount out, the total for the NEAS expenses are actually anticipated to be $13,400, so there have actually been a slight reduction in the rest of those dues.
I guess that's what it was, Jeff, but I thought it's important for the public to see a large increase, and it's because, in that, an acronym that Jeff used is actually accreditation for, for the high school.
Correct.
So, which is a fairly important thing to have.
So, so that is, that is a one-time expense that will exist in the budget for this coming year, if the board approves the budget, and then it will come out the following year, because it's a once every 10-year expenditure. So those, that's my summary.
Yeah, can I just point out, because there was a question that came in earlier as well about charter school tuition?
Oh, yeah.
Charter school tuition has been removed from the high school budget. Both the governor's proposed budget and the education committee's vote late last week or early this week have recommended that those funds be derived from the state level, so that they're not put upon local districts to fund the cost of students from our district attending charter schools. So that $60,000 reduction is reflected in the high school budget lines.
And so I should probably clarify, thank you for saying that. I should clarify, because if you look at the non-salaries budget, the actual change that's reflected on the second page is minus 5.52 percent. It's, it's in the negative because of that $60,000 reduction. The balance of it is that $33,000 that I pointed out, which is, which is an increase. It's just that when that's, that's balanced off against the charter school reduction, it looks like a negative number, but I can't claim any credit for that, so.
Sure you can. So Jeff, I know-
I'm not that desperate, Jeff.
I know when people, you know, it's, you will, will go through and look at the big dollar changes, but as assessment, $14,527, that's an assessment, we have no, whatever the increase is, we have to pay as part of PaaS, so that's not a discretionary increase.
Correct. There's a, there's a formula, and I think Suzanne, I was probably more familiar with it than I am, there's a formula that all the sending schools have arrived at, based on the number of students who went to PaaS, I think, a year or two years ago, it's always a year-
Right, it's formula, but it's, it's nondiscretionary.
It's nondiscretionary.
And always, that, that's what we have to pay.
Correct.
And for NEAS, the other second largest increase is $12,913, that's accreditation fees that-
Correct.
Will have, that's, in a way, nondiscretionary as well.
If we want to be accredited.
If we want to be accredited, which is probably a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And then, so those, the two largest items are nondiscretionary, and then for equipment, decline of $10,000 for the achievement, that's my southern accent, Achievement Center, the $10,471 decline is-
That was related to the fact that we replaced computers in the Achievement Center last year, so it was large, it had, there was a big bubble last year because of that replacement of computers, so that's not necessary, obviously, this year.
Okay.
And Steve, I will remind the board, paid the other half of that cost of those computers in.
And then there's a lot of focus on, you know, workloads, teacher loads, class sizes. You know, I know if you have children in Pontco for the middle school, it's, you know, class size, and, you know, it's been a lot of time on, but, you know, teacher load, the guideline's 75 to 90. I get asked every year, why is instructional, instrumental music, that's double the guideline, maybe just share what the-
Yeah, and that, and that would be true in virtually every school, because, because bands are large.
Right.
But, but band teachers are used to dealing with, they want large bands. It's a good thing to have, so it's, it's, I don't think the 75 to 90 guideline was in any way anticipated that it was, was going to apply to a provision like that. It's only a good thing that our signups are that healthy.
I just want to make a clarification, but we've got some questions that noted various savings, like the savings of the $60,000, if, by the way, it ultimately gets passed. Why isn't that passed on to taxpayers? Well, the reality is, if I pass it on to taxpayers, I'd have to raise the increase in taxes. You can't just pass on a savings, that savings is netted into what we owe, as an increase. I can't simply take that out and pass it on any more than I could some little savings and purchase the books from one year to the next. It takes up for an increase in another item. Anybody have any other questions on the Jeff's narrative or the non-salaries and benefits high school budget? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess in reverse order, we'll go to the middle school?
All right, thank you. Start with the, the middle school, the non-salary and benefits side. The overall budget proposal for the middle school includes modest increases in individual line items, and I broke those out. So across our supply line, books and periodicals, books and periodicals for the library learning commons, equipment for the library learning commons, and instructional technology software overall, were total increases of just over $24,000 against some small reductions across other lines with just minor variations in, in costs, came out to just about an overall net increase of just under $20,000. So within each of those lines, our biggest increase line is in our supply line of just over $16,000, and the, some of that increase is accounted for in that teachers are requesting some additional math and science supplies, increase over past years with the science supplies. We're finding we have aging science kits marked a lot by consumable items, and teachers are seeking to really be able to replenish those and update those, those kits to have not only the replenishment of the consumables, but some of those materials and supplies have not been updated or upgraded in quite a bit of time, so threw science kits for that. And some additional math supplies and resources with our alignment to the common core and with our assessment of our current math program and the amount of supplementing that happens, and teachers being more, you know, innovative and thinking outside the box and looking to, to meet the needs of all students, you know, seeking a variety of instructional strategies and techniques to bring the content to the students. So there, we're seeing increase in, in requests for different kinds of materials. And I put text, math and science text resources, and that was probably a little bit confusing, and what I meant by that was there has been a math magazine and science magazine requests, which I think technically are periodicals, so the question of whether they should have gone under supplies or books and periodicals is probably a good question to pose it. It may just, I don't, I'm not sure if those are in the, in the correct areas or not, because it looks like the two resources requested for, across seventh and eighth for math and for science, short text resources, I guess I'll call them, are probably technically periodicals. But that, those were new, new requests that we hadn't seen before. We have two instructional strategists who have submitted supply requests, which was new, new this year. We're seeing a general, overall increase in, in supply requests and the cost, shipping and handling, costs of materials have gone up slightly overall. So kind of all of those little bits and pieces in total amounted to the, to the $16,000 increase, and, you know, there are other, other pieces to that that I could explain. But overall, those are some of the key, the key highlights of that line item. Under books and periodicals, the fifth grade has added the everyday math second journal to the curriculum. It was added this year, it was not budgeted for, so we budgeted the amount of adding that cost, in addition to novels for literature circles, professional writing resources for teachers, with some of the writing workshop work that's happening across five through eight, account for some of the items in that, in that line. Should I pause for a second?
I think so. It's time to clip it down. The iPad went dark. This is kind of like when we used to have A-traps. There's still some songs and songs.
No problem.
So is the iPad important? It said flip tape.
Okay, so we had to flip the tape, so that's why I paused, in space. So I was mentioning the professional writing resources for teachers across five through eight. Our library learning commons with our repurposing and our renovation through the kindness of CEF grant and also support from our MSBA, we did a huge reading out of our collection of outdated materials, and Jonathan and Amanda are looking to build our collection backup and to replace some of those outdated materials, which were taken off the shelves. They're also adding some additional equipment following that remodel and repurpose of, examples would be things like iPods, iPad stands, and they're doing a lot with media and filming and other technologies, so there's lots of little gizmos and gadgets that come along with that, that are part of, part of that. That's not a technical term, those aren't technical terms. Instructional technology software overall, guidance is kind of looking to build there. The, the school counselors are building up some materials that they have on bullying, on harassment, on some other health-related topics, some school counseling apps, and we've also adding some additional music subscriptions and apps added. Those are kind of the key elements, taken all in total really represent the, the line item increases for, for the middle school, middle school budget. To go to the, the salaries and benefits side, overall, we're seeing that our outgoing eighth grade class of 151 students is being replaced by an incoming fifth grade class of 112 students, so it's a difference of 39 students. To, to account for that shift and looking across teachers, classrooms, and class sizes, the middle school is proposing to take the current six teachers that are in fifth grade and reduce that to six, six, sorry, take the current six teachers in fifth grade and reduce that to five teachers. As the current seventh grade of 130 students moves forward into eighth grade, we'd be reducing that from seven classes equivalent to, to six classes, and using one of those positions, either call it the fifth grade or the eighth grade position, and spreading that across sixth, seventh grade to help cover teaching of classes and also to, to work with class sizes. And that second position would be accounted for by a retirement that, that we have, so it would be a loss of one position and a reassignment of the second position across sixth and seventh grade to keep our class sizes at around 21, with fifth grade at about 22.4, for overall 24 teachers with an overall average class size of 21.6. One of the, in looking forward at projections and enrollments, we see that the current third grade coming up to us in two years will return, I believe it was, to 137 students, so we want to be well positioned to absorb, absorb that class as they, as they come in and have teaching staff and current teachers familiar with content with our teams to be able to be ready, so to keep, keep our position, use it well in the interim year, and then also be able to reassign that to the, to the fifth grade team for that class coming up. I did- I did have some, some questions that came in. I believe Jeff has kind of addressed the sub, substitute question about why there is an increase. So I'll, I'll leave that be, assuming that, that's been answered. The increase in supplies over, not only from last year, but over, over two years, why is that happening? And it's, it's, it's really kind of increase in costs. And I think the requests that teachers make on a year, year basis vary a little bit within grade level and with, within teams. So what, what they're saying they need, what we're saying we can provide, we go through a, a process and we, we go through and add up what, what they need. And I think the biggest shifts in that have really been, you know, like I said, what I outlined before is the, the specific science and math content materials that we're seeing. We are, we have added, you know, more, more chorus with the fifth and sixth chorus happening during the day. So the materials have been requested for that. We're seeing more requests for building up classroom libraries and, and materials for literature circles and writing resources and things like that. You know, our world language program, our students take several of the, you know, reputable exams, and those costs get due increase and go up and are added. So, so overall, they're not huge shifts, but I think we see, you know, from, from year to year that those have an impact on, on those particular lines that go up. Overall, the, the, you know, with the strategic plan obviously being in mind and our indicators of success, the, the question in kind of looking at the staff development line's been noted as, how come that's not going up with, with some of the changes we're looking at and making in terms of math and aligning to the Common Core and preparing students for algebra and, and availability of geometry and whatnot? How's it happening? And I think we're really doing a lot of that work within the time and resources that we already have. We have common planning time that happens, you know, every day, every five days. One of those meetings is dedicated to math, another to science, one to social studies, one to, to language arts. So a lot of that curriculum alignment, curriculum planning, development of common assessments, support of teacher work happens during, during that time. So there's really no, no additional costs to that. It's just, it's about how that work is happening within what we already have. And we have brought in two math consultants, coaches this year, which I think came more from Ruth Ellen's area of the budget. Grant monies, which have helped, which wouldn't have an increase for the, for the middle school budget. And a lot of that kind of ongoing, organic, in-house professional development that can happen within our school day without sending people out, I think is, is a large part of, of how that's happening and using the professional development, staff development money that we already have used, I think teachers use judiciously and they, they use well. And the things we are sending people out for are largely prioritized around, around mathematics, around Common Core work, around differentiated instruction, around, we have some people going out for some executive function work. We have people doing a lot of work around the Steve Westler and training the trainer and all of that wrapped up into the staff development PD, but we're doing that within the existing amounts that we've had. It's just a matter of prioritizing around that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause there and see if there are questions and see if I've adequately answered questions that have been posed.
David.
I think you've mostly answered my question about, I was surprised that there isn't more staff development to handle a fairly significant increase in the level of math being taught in middle school. And I wasn't aware that we had grants, but are you both, you and Ruth Ellen comfortable that our teachers in middle school are getting enough support to be able to teach algebra, algebra and geometry effectively to more students?
I, I would say I am. They're working very hard and they're spending a lot of time doing that. But I feel with, with our master schedule template that we've implemented this year that we're sort of looking at and assessing and as we're designing for, for next year, the amount, the amount of time that they have to work together as a team has been critical. I'm hearing from math teachers that they, they feel the support has been really excellent that they've had through the two coaches that we've had. The, the teachers have really responded well with them. Whenever we've learned of workshops that have come up, Sharma is the name of another resident cut of, of expert in math. Whenever he comes around, we send people up to those kinds of workshops and other opportunities. So I, I think, I, I feel confident and agree with the time we have in-house and through grant money and things we've been able to capitalize on. And I'm hearing from the teachers that they, they feel very well supported in that.
Thank you.
A lot of the work is supported through Title II A funding as well. So that's, that's done a lot of the, the coaching that we've had come in. It will be sending a number of teachers to the National Council Teachers of Math Conference that's coming up in April. So that's an additional source that we've had to be able to kind of rally around.
I just wanted to make sure that we're gonna, unlike some people that we always, all we do is cut, I, I want to make it clear that if we're imposing a significant new challenge that we, I'm personally willing to fight for whatever funds we need to do it. If we're comfortable, fine. If not, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. We're hearing, we're okay. And if, if I'm hearing we're not, I'll certainly keep that in mind and, and let everyone know. But I think for now, we're okay. Thank you.
John.
Mike, I wanted to ask about class sizes. We, we discussed it somewhere last year in this process. It looks like, and I think this year we have a couple of sixth grade classrooms that are one student above the board guideline of twenty-two. It looks like you've got two fifth grade classrooms next year. On the basis of, of this year's experience, can you characterize your confidence that those classrooms will, will be effective next year?
So I want to make sure I understood the question is.
Well, it looks like we've got two fifth grade classrooms, if I'm understanding this correctly, that are out of five next year that are projected to have twenty-three students in them, which is one more than the board's guideline of twenty-two. We talked, you know, about the fact that that's a guideline. But, you know, we do, when we go over it, we want to make sure we're, we're doing so thoughtfully.
Right.
You have some sixth grade classrooms that are over that guideline this year. Has, has that been a problem in those classrooms? Are you comfortable that next year in fifth grade that there won't be a problem in those?
I mean, I think the, the context of, of middle schools is, is certainly a little bit different than different grade levels, the elementary and the kinds of supports and things that, that are being, you know, provided and students learning to read and write and, and all the additional things that they need. You know, I think I would say, make clear that what may work well at the middle school may not be what's, what's ideal because of the, the differences that exist between students at different developmental stages and whatnot.
Well, that's why we have three different class size guidelines at the elementary school for one for K, one for one and two, one for three and four. So we, I hope we address that within our guidelines.
Yeah, and I would say, I would say it does. And so I definitely agree with that approach and I think to, to speak to that. With the, with the fifth grade, the idea of, you know, six versus five, you know, eighteen plus students per class versus, you know, around twenty-two, it's a tough consideration. And certainly conversations that we're having at, at the middle school is what's best? Can we meet the needs of, of students at, at twenty-two, three? They're doing it now. They're doing it well. You know, it doesn't mean we don't have conversations and, and raise questions about, you know, I, what, what is the ideal? And obviously, teachers feel strongly, the, the fewer students I have, the, the better they feel that they're able to do. But what's the tipping point? We talked a lot about that last year, when it makes a difference. I feel confident with the class sizes we've proposed for middle school age students. We are still in that sweet spot that I think we, we can meet their needs. We do see a little bit of, of variations here. They're average class sizes because we do, do a little bit of grouping when it comes to the different math courses that students take. But on the whole, I think these are very reasonable class sizes where teachers can be responsive to the needs of students.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. I'm sorry to get this too soon.
That's okay.
In looking at this strategic plan, and, and the question comes around the sixteen thousand increase in instructional supplies, which I'm sure is likely fine. This, this current year is when in the plan, you were really going to be working on the crosswalk of next generation science standards. And next year is when you were going to really review and assess the alignment and student performance in science and really make some curriculum decisions. So I just wondered if you're mostly just patching up science kits to get through to some decisions made next year or if you're wholesale replacing some? And I just wondered where you were on that time, timeframe?
I think it's the first. It's more of a kind of patchwork replacement, while that more thorough, comprehensive analysis will happen next year, like you said.
So you may be changing out some kits at that point or whatever.
Absolutely. I think all that will be under review.
Some of those may be shifting between grade levels as we look to see where the alignments fit. And so it's really more the interim step.
Hold in place till you can get to those. Thank you.
Just to follow up on John's question, I know parents, you know, if it's frame, you know, there is a decline in teachers from twenty-five to twenty-four. So, you know, that, obviously people are focusing on that, but at the same time, it looks like the average class size is actually declining or comparable. So maybe for on the school board, when you're doing this every year, you, you know, we tend to focus more on class size where if I was reading a narrative and said, oh, my gosh, there's going to be one less teacher, you know, maybe just on, on the average class sizes, it looks like fifth grade's going to go from twenty-three point one to twenty-two point four. Sixth grade will go from twenty-two point eight to twenty-one point four. Seventh grade, twenty-one point seven to twenty-one point one. And eighth grade would be twenty-one point six to twenty-one point seven. So it looks like even though there's one less teacher, at least in three of the four grades, the class sizes will be smaller than this year. Is that fair?
That's correct. Thank you.
And I had another question, but it, oh, a team teaching model. Someone will say, we got a question, and how do you, you know, team teaching, you think if it's two people, if you have five teachers or seven teachers, how, how does that work? In other words, how do you, when you need an even number of teachers? We just got one of the questions through email, you know. So if I have a, you know, eighth grader this year, there are seven teachers. If it's team teaching, you know, how do you do it with an odd number of teachers?
Okay, so if, if there are a team of seven or a team of five, how, how are those classes allocated? So basically, I mean, seventh grades and eighth grade are scheduled a little bit differently because they have slightly more, more different, there are different sections that are offered. But whether, what, if they're co-teaching, the idea of truly co-teaching, it's two, two teachers in the, in the same classroom, you know, working together at the same time. But if they're, we're talking about teaching an odd number, like we have seven classes like we currently do in the eighth grade or, or five, how, how is that going to impact teaming? And so we've got to look at certification, highly qualified status, the number of teachers that we need, we need covered, and what is the best way to try to, to try to align teachers together? Ideally, working in teams, we know is, is, is best practice. So, and I'm not sure if I'm, I'm getting a little confused with the co-teaching part of your question. So maybe, can you ask me one more time?
Yeah.
You're intending, I think, to ask about teams.
If you're, yeah, the team has two teachers and you have, and you have five people. You'd say, well, here's two, here's two, and then there's one.
Oh, I'm overcomplicating that.
Yes. That's what I'm saying, you know, you're in the weeds, but it's like, all right, if there's team teaching and you have an odd number, how does that work?
So at fifth grade, if we have the five classes, the question would be, do you have a three person and a two person? Or are there other models? And, you know, so, so I'll be working, you know, with the fifth grade team if this proposal's the way we in fact end up going and need to go. You know, what works? What have you done in the past? Have, you know, they have done a three and two in the past and made that work. Obviously, two, two and one comes out mathematically even, but it raises questions about if you have one self-contained class and other that are two-person teams, what's right for, for which kids? And you're, you're offering something that looks very different, and can you do that equitably? So I'd say probably a three and a two is more, more viable possibility. The way we did eighth grade this year was a four and a three. And then it's just a matter of, of their scheduling, their time around what works.
But the parent support in the history of the schools, for this, this, I assume wouldn't be the first year we had an odd number of teachers. In fact, in eighth grade last year, we had seven teachers. That's by my calculation, an odd number. No, but, you know, there's just something, we'll get a question. It just, it, when you're in the profession, it, you know, here's how it works, but it can sometimes be simple. Well, how do you get, so, thank you, but you probably get some questions on that.
I think the true follow-up question is going to be, how are you going to divide the team with six and a half teachers?
So does anyone have any? Thank you, thank you. So does anyone have any more questions for the middle school at, at this time?
I, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. In presenting your overall budget and pulling out the line items that are significant changes with the rationale column, I, I found that incredibly easy to understand, follow, and, and just see as I was observing the, the budget. And I would love to see budgets presented with more of these types of, for line item budget, the increase or the decrease amount in the rationale behind it. I just think it's easy for us, and I also feel that it's probably easier for our constituents to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have another question?
Go ahead.
I love that I have all four of you in a row. And I'm, I'm going to ask you, Mike, because you're the, the middle, you're the middle school.
The middle child.
The middle child. I'm, as we talk about professional development and the math programs, you, you can all answer, but language arts programs, Common Core that came six years ago, Common Core? Or you, or with, when Alan Hawkins was here, the Common Core came in. RTI came in nine years ago by law, a, a long time ago. So as these, I'm going to call them movements, educational decisions by the state, federal and state are made, and then it comes down to districts, we want, of course, them to change in Poncove Middle School and then up to high school. So our kids get the, so they're, 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 you know, by high school, each grade. They get the, thank you, a full benefit of the program. And now we have Ruth Ellen. So I guess I want some insurance that what's happening in Poncove, as I went through the list, teacher down the hall, I'm not going to be able to name all the, the new projects that are happening, the, the writing program, the reading program, the math program. And there's two questions about the math, buying books for the math. Is what's happening in Poncove directly going to move to benefit the kids in middle school, move to high school? And you don't have to answer every subject of course, but I guess I want, is there a plan and a protocol for how you do professional development to meet the needs of the state and federal guidelines? So that we're saving, we're helping the kids out and we're helping teachers out so there's a common language between teachers to keep the schools aligned? Who wants to answer?
Yes, yes, is what I really want to hear.
Really, a, a lot of it is aligning to those standards. And that those standards are the first vertical link that helps to hold all of those pieces together. first vertical link that helps to hold all of those pieces together across schools across programs. Because if we're aligned vertically to what those standards say kids need to now understand and be able to do, then it's going to systematically flow one into the other. Now, to say that professional development is done at the high school the same way it's done at the middle school, it's done at Poncove, it's not, because the needs are different, the programs are different, and access to teachers and how we get at the work tends to be different. Is there somebody who kind of sees where they all are headed in one direction? I guess that would be me.
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Yes. And I do speak with these people on a regular basis.
Great. Thank you. Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? And is it also you then who looks at RTI compliance in the three schools? Is that under you?
Yes, and each, each one of the central office staff works with the RTI group for each one of the buildings. So we divvy that part up as well.
As a quick editorial comment, I would appreciate learning more about, not now.
Okay.
Learning more about that as we go forward. Thanks.
So maybe later on, when we get to that topic, we can follow up on more on professional development and any follow-up questions you have. Kelly, I guess you're up to bat?
Up to bat. So I, like my two comrades here, I will, no, I'll spare you going through the entire narrative, but I'll focus on the summary of the proposed budget for 15 and 16. The staffing side of it, as you know, in the narrative, we're proposing a reduction, potentially of one teacher at the kindergarten level, based on the projected enrollment that we have from planning decisions from the report that we have that is projecting approximately 88 students, but we just never know. So we are, as Superintendent said, Meredith said, that there's contingency funds available should we need a sixth class. So if we, if we need to, we won't make decisions on placement until August if we're even kind of on the fence of that, so to save from having to dismantle any, or anyone get attached to who they think they may be having for their first public school experience. So, and I, like, like Mike and Jeff, I got some late afternoon questions that were emailed to me, and so I will try to answer some of those as I go along, but at the end, I can address those where it makes sense. Throughout my presentation here, I can, I can do that for part of that. Within the regular, the non-staffing side of the budget proposal for next year, probably one of the biggest pieces is going to be the implementation of the new Everyday Math Edition, the fourth edition, that aligns specifically with the Common Core state standards. Currently, our kindergarten is our new full-day kindergarten, it's going spectacularly, is implementing that right now, and so grades one through four will be implementing it next year. We had that, the teacher, I know there were two questions around books regarding math, the teacher resource packages that come with manuals, that come with basically everything a teacher needs to roll out a program, that comes under books. And we got, we have a wonderful deal from McGraw-Hill, buy one, get one free, because I think we are the first consumer of Everyday Math in the state, they tell us. So we were the pioneers of Everyday Math, who knew? And so each of those packages, teacher resource packages, is 300, approximately $320. So we, for everyone we buy, we get one free. So all of those that we're purchasing for next year come in just under $5,000. So really, that's, could be potentially, I mean, it's a savings of close to $5,000. So we're pretty pleased with that. The consumable, the workbooks, which are the student journal packages, those, there's a question about that, why, why aren't those under books? Because those are consumables, workbooks, we have to purchase every year, those come under supplies. So that's what that, that's what that is. And sometimes it's confusing, sometimes we get inverted, so. And another big piece for the coming year is, it's already been referenced, is ongoing professional development for getting, for getting us on board and aligned with Common Core state standards, particularly in English, Language Arts, math, and science. In fact, Ruffellin, Julie and I had a meeting this morning about what that's going to look like literally within weeks as we get started, really in preparation for summer work that we're going to be doing and getting our report card aligned with that for the coming year. It's actually in my narrative to have that by summer 2016, but we're seeing it, we want it really for next year, so we want it even sooner. So that would be a change in the narrative. Another, another big piece in our proposed budget is in the equipment line, and I know there were some questions around chairs. We are in pretty dire need of chairs, particularly for grades one, two, and three, kindergarten and fourth grade are set, kindergarten has all the chairs and fourth grade has the chairs. But a question was asked about how old are the chairs and how, what's their age usage? The current chairs we have, and any of you are invited to come over and sit in them for any length of time, and I think you would happily go out.
We're small enough to fit in chairs?
Happily go out, you'd be surprised, you'd just sit down. But they are, we were trying to estimate how old they are. Most of them are purchased right around the time that Poncove Middle School complex was renovated, so that's how long we've had most of those chairs in those grade levels. So.
How long ago that was?
Yeah, 1996. So 1995, 96 is when it was renovated. So what we've been doing, and Meredith and I have talked about getting a furniture recycle replacement going, but then when we implemented full-day kindergarten, obviously the equipment went into that, those lines for a couple of years. So, but our biggest need is chairs. So rather than do full replacement of desks, tables, we really don't, it's really the chairs that we need, so really targeting what we need. And one of the reasons is they are not, most of them are not adjustable. So we have children, obviously, not just of different ages, but different sizes within grades, they break pretty easily, they're extraordinarily uncomfortable. There is, children are always bringing us screws. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you how many, and many probably parents sitting here and staff will know, you know, when you sit down, you're kind of going this sometimes. So, and looking at the budget, they're expensive, but we want to get high-quality ones, we want them to be adjustable. So our plan is to purchase enough for two first grades and one second grade, very started with second grade last year as we could, but that's, that's one of the big, big items that we need. With professional development, there was, there was a question about how are we, I think similar to yours, like, you know, are we allocating enough money for staff development? And we think so, but we can always shift out of our improvement, within our improvement of instruction lines for some of our summer work in between workshops and professional conferences are coming up. It's, it's a little tricky sometimes to project how much we're going to need based on what's going to be offered and what's going to be appropriate. And we, one thing that was added this year is for the, next year is a requirement that we're going to be asking all staff, when they want to attend a conference, when they want to attend a workshop, to really show us where is that in alignment to the strategic plan, and how are you going to be sharing it out? We do that already with the sharing out part, but we really haven't been really tight with where is it in the strategic plan, how does this align with what this work is that will continue up? So that is a piece for next year. And there's a lot of offerings, but we, we're really trying to target, build on the work that we've been, already been doing. There's a question about some of our work in this, some of our listings in the strategic plans has continued this. Because we teach everything at the elementary level, I mean, as I said, next year, we're implementing a new addition for Everyday Math. Two years ago, we started implementing units of, teachers' college units of study writing. This is our second year. So we're, we're always evaluating and refining and improving on that. Two years, three years before that, we started implementing Foundations, the new phonics program. So we're, we don't want to, it's a continual cycle of, now, is this working, going back, and how can we make it better? And not putting too much on our place while at the same time moving forward. So, and then there were some questions about, for, in the text libraries, where, what's the cost for each grade level for, in the book line? The book line has just under $5,000 of that is the Everyday Math resource packages for teachers. And then for grade levels, it's approximately, it's between $4,000, $4,800 per grade level, approximately, and it really varies, and I can get more specific information for the board if you'd like, but it really varies on, teachers are taking really careful inventory about what their needs are, particularly on how we're going to do close reading for, to meet the standards for the Common Core, both in narrative and in informational texts. Like, for example, first grade was noticing informational texts that seems to be just loaded with mammals and sea life, and we want more topic, informational topics, and doing that finite inventorying, that kind of, that kind of work. I think Mike and, I think Jeff had answered about the substitute line, is, that question came my way as well. And I know there was, there was a question about class size, and I actually have an update on, we've actually had new students enroll since this, if you look on page eight, the projected enrollment. There's a question about for next year for grade two, and grade two, currently, we have 106 students, and we have two more registered for next year for 108, so that will bring six classrooms to 18 students. And so, and we have for next, we have actually six students already registered for next year, bringing even like grade, grade three will be going down. The grade, current grade two has five teachers, and current grade three has six teachers. And so that teacher that's in grade three is going back to grade two next year, and grade three is going down to five classes. It's going up to 102 students, what we know so far, actually is 102 students right now. Next year's fourth grade, we already have two new students registered, so next year's fourth grade, as of right now, will have 136 students. And as I said, kindergarten is kind of a wild card, so we're just keeping an eye on that, as is first grade, and we, we tend to have more first graders coming in. I've been giving a lot of tours lately to families, a lot of twins out there, I don't know, a lot of tours for twins, so. And some, some families definitely moving to Cape, and others that are just kind of looking on, seeing if this is, this community is a good fit for them. And other, any other questions? Looking at my other.
Maybe, Kelly, just on the class size, there's one under, maybe it's easier to see under the salary and benefits line, but you had mentioned kindergarten last year was 16.7, you know, 17.6, you've already addressed that that's probably the hardest enrollment to, to project, and you mentioned there's the contingency funds up higher than projected. First grade would go from 17.3 to 18.7, that's below the 20 guideline. Second grade, 20.2 to 17.3, that'd be actually one of the smaller class sizes in schools, but that would be well below the 20, you know, guideline. And then third grade, 22.3, would go down to 20.2, that would be below the guideline. So the only class that might be at the higher end of the guideline of 18 to 22 is fourth grade, which you had mentioned.
Right.
But all the other ones are well below.
The, I'm looking at, the first grade would be, with a projected enrollment of 112, I had, would be at 18.6, is that correct?
Right.
Oh, thank you. My colleague's looking at it. And then the second grade for next year, we know is going to be at 108. We know that definitely, so that would be at 18. And then third grade, we know is going to be at 102, and that would be at, with five classes, 20.4. And it would be, and the fourth grade with six classes, at 136 would be 22.6. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. John?
So are you comfortable with, so that sounds like four fourth-grade classrooms that have an addition, 23 kids in a classroom as opposed to 22. Are you comfortable that those classrooms will be effective learning environments for those children? And will you be able to explain to parents that?
Since we had this question last year.
I think we've had this conversation before.
We have had this conversation in the same classroom, I think. You know, that's obviously a number we'll watch closely. It is right at that cusp. We have six fabulous fourth-grade teachers, but, you know, we will see, I mean, right now, we know there's two that are definitely registered, you know, that, for next year.
Right, no, I'm not asking though, you know, what happens if we have additional registrations that we're not projecting now?
But for right now, going in.
You're saying there's 136 that we know about now. So we know there's four, right now, we're projecting four classrooms that are 23 kids. So what I'm trying to understand is your level of comfort with those classrooms at 23 students per classroom?
I mean, it's not ideal, but I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I just, as I said, I want to keep a close eye, you know.
I mean, I know you're always careful in terms of how, you know, we talked about this at last year, how the classrooms are constructed and so forth, so that it can be, that it has a lot to do with the mix of the kids and all that. And I know you work very hard to make sure you've got the best balance for each teacher, but I just want to understand your level of comfort with the, with the budget proposal as it stands.
I think if we, you don't have anyone, you know, it doesn't, we don't get a big bubble, you know, I'd be comfortable with it, and I think, you know, obviously it would be really working hard to make sure those classrooms are balanced, as we always do, but it's a, you know, Mike referred, you know, projecting of potentially even adding one more by the time it gets to you. We just, we just watch it closely and make sure the balance and the support that those classrooms need are in place.
Right, and we often meet in August, usually around instructional support, to discuss, you know, changes in anticipated student need and how we would respond and addressing that, so.
We know they have good chairs. I shouldn't say that.
Well, good.
Kelly, just, and then I'll get to David. Just so, there's a line item in there for supplies that are, it's increasing 15,000.
Oh, yes.
And just so, you know, that, you know, well, that's a big increase, but I believe it's placeholder allocation for a different.
And Meredith and I talked about that earlier today, she was going to talk about that, that's for the preschool.
Exactly, so I just want everyone to know, the way it's constructed now, you know, of the $12,567 change, 15 more, you know, $15,000 of the increase is actually in a line item that may be reallocated to a different budget. So everyone understands that 15,000 is preschool, that, as of now, well, we'll discuss this after instructional support, but, so in your budget books, under, and next year, we're going to number these pages, you know, the 15,000 for the board's benefit, 8720, 6,000 under Poncove, under Poncove. Oh, yeah, okay. The $15,000 is for the supply. The $15,000 is for the supplies for the preschool proposal, which is not technically part of the Poncove budget, just so you know. And we'll update these at some point, so.
So along that line, Michael, if that was subtracted from the overall change, he's actually below last year's request.
Yeah, you have to sort of net out the one-time expenses for kindergarten that were in last year's budget, similar to the charter school. We saw those, you know, reductions, but yes, down.
And where are those?
Up in the, under regular instruction. We're down in supplies and books and periodicals because we had that increase last year to add to full-day kindergarten classrooms.
Right. And I have $100,000 in my mind for that one-time figure. Is, was the rest of that in facility?
50 was the renovation cost and 50 was supplies and materials. So this should add up to 50 then? Am I missing one?
No.
We had equipment in there too. We had.
And the point is the 8720, 6,000 supplies, the $15,000 increase is part of the.
Yeah, I looked at, but the last year for the kindergarten. So if we had a one-time expense of 50,000 last year, should the red lines equal people?
It was in more than one line. So not going to find one line.
Size, materials and equipment.
One time means you're not, you know.
Yes, 712.
I think what Kate's pointing out is that.
Even the reductions.
Even with the.
Distributing all that out is not going to equal 50,000.
Right. While there were, while there was a one-time cost, clearly there are equipment or supplies needs that go beyond the, the level of spending of the budget the year before that.
Because we held off on, like, the chairs. We held, we held off on that, so.
I can't wait to sit in those chairs, so that's. So for Poncove, oh, I'm sorry, David.
I had asked a question, which you addressed by, I think you've addressed. I was noticing in, because this chart is in the public record this way, that for grade two in 1415, we had 101 kids and it was only going to 104 in 1516. So an increase of three students, we're going to get one more teacher. It seemed odd to me. But we now have, it's really going to be 108 kids rather than 104. What's the guideline for second grade? Because it just seemed to me strange that you'd have an increase of a teacher for a difference of three kids.
It's just, the guideline is one, first, for grade 22.
And so with 108, if we only had five, it would be about 21.
So it would be actually three classes of 22 and two classes of 21. So it would be about.
So it's, so we can more easily justify the increase in teacher because now we have four more kids.
Projected, right. It's all, these are projected. And we know, we know we have people funded up. We know we sometimes have people leave over this month. We sometimes have more kids come. So we have to be cautious about saying any of these are definite numbers. They are all projected numbers.
I'm just saying that somebody looks at this budget carefully, which a lot of people do, I would question why we're adding a teacher for an increase of three kids. But it's now seven, seven more kids.
Well, David, the way I would answer it is, you know, the total number of students is, is, the total number of teachers is declining by one teacher and across the entire Poncove school, the total number of students is declining by, by nine. And there's a reduction of one teacher. So you could, if you, as we found out last year, if you look at it individual grade only, you know, you can, you can talk all night about, you know, what's the right mix. But basically, the rate, student teacher ratio in Poncove isn't proposed to change very much. It's changing from 19.3 students per teacher to 19, I'm sorry, 19.13 last year to 19.5.
So we're, because it's spread out. Because currently in that grade, we have 106 students and we have two that are definitely registered to make it 108 for next year.
Susannah?
I just wanted to ask since it was brought up tonight about the, the decision to not increase world language staffing, since it is spread so thin and the limited offerings in the, I think she said five, five or six course.
We had discussed it, actually, we had discussed it as a leadership team and it didn't make it through the, I mean, you know, just being respectful of, you know, how our, we did have some discussion about it. And a lot of it has to do, I mean, a lot of, not whether to add, you know, how, whether to add it or not at that level, but scheduling is, is pretty tricky. And so, and Senora, Senora Chase and my Doc Chase said, 2:50 minute periods, it's actually supposed to be longer, but it's just the transition time is, is really challenging. So, you know, we're considering, you know, with space, keeping our location for next year, you know, we've been meeting, going round and around on scheduling. Changed a couple of times this year to see how we can improve upon it. And we definitely want, you know, here, like we say, it's not, you know, it's not really, I mean, we definitely want to improve on that. It's just, but we did, we did have that discussion about.
It just, it just reminds me, as you're talking, you know, to explain to the audience or anybody watching, to, who may not realize that when we refer to the district leadership, you know, it's, it's all the administration and principals and obviously superintendent. And, and they are, they're, everybody's the spokesperson for their school. So it's not like it's a, a one voice decision. So just, just since that was mentioned tonight, I thought it'd be important to ask and.
No, it's a question, please.
And remind people that that's how these decisions are made, you know, it's a group. But thank you.
John?
I'd like to follow up on that, Susannah. Thank you. Because what Marcia Chase said was, we, world language teachers don't have enough time with students in the classroom. Proposed the solution being, being more staffing, but there's another constraint on time beyond staffing, which is time itself. Do we have ti, if we had the staffing, do we have ti, I mean, you only have time in the day if you take that away from something else, right? But if we increase world language staffing, we would, that would be only one part of our decision. We would also have to decide what part of the day of, for Poncovas, would we be eliminating that they're currently doing? Would it be less recess or would it be less?
It would never be less recess. No, it's not.
Well, it shouldn't. Never be less recess.
Well, and that's when we can have to get really creative. So if you think ideally, three times, if we offered Spanish and French three times a week, three 20-minute times a week, fully 20 minutes, that doesn't include transition, you know, dropping off, picking up. That's, and then we would look at just through the schedule. It does not, it's not the same, world language instructional time being 20 minutes, it's not the same as our regular LIDR or other LIDRs, which we don't even really look at world language really as LIDRs. I mean, it's, it's not like the 45-minute block of art music, who said, media center. So that's where we have to get really creative. Julie Nicholson is a master at scheduling. And, you know, we've gone around and around trying to make this fit. And, you know, with, you know, I agree with our, you know, with additional staffing, it would help with again, going back to when we sit together and make the decisions, because it's a big picture and we have to, you know, that's why we have this process.
I might suggest another lens to look through it, you know, when we have, you know, subperiodic curriculum reviews and as well as updates on the strategic plan, you know, we need to ask, what are we doing? Are we implementing the plan? And then the second question should be, are we doing it well? So at some point, we can say, yeah, we are, we do offer foreign language to more grades, but when we look at curriculum needs for the district, it may be, that may not be a high priority as other areas. And, you know, you can't do it every year, but when we review curriculum, I think that's a big part of it. Are we, what are we doing? And more importantly, are we doing it well? And how might those priorities have to change? So I think, you know, that's, I mispronounced your name, but.
Madame.
Madame Chase, you know, that's a great question. So when we look at that, you know, what, what, how, you know, we can control the schedule, so what's the best way to schedule the curriculum for student needs and what's the priority? And that's part of getting feedback. This is great to get our feedback and as we look at curriculum in those different areas, that should be a big component. Are we doing it just to do it or are we doing it well? So, you know, I don't think we can answer all those questions in a budget workshop, but that might be one area.
I'd like, I'd like to add on to something that Susannah said. If I understand correctly, the way decisions are made, it's the district leadership team, yes, there is principals and people for each schools, but nobody, we have one district. So when each principal talks for their school, they still have to talk with the other principal. We have one fund of money, one budget, and there may be a higher priority for the district as a whole to put something in middle school or high school or Poncove. And that's where each principal comes with their, their list. And then it has to get decided as a group, what can we afford as a district and what works best in our district. And a rubric we used to use when we had somebody for a year is must haves, would like to haves and would be great, but we can sacrifice it. You have to prioritize each of the needs. So it'd be nice to maybe to have world language five days a week for X amount of time, but there are other demands on our money and demands on the time and demands on, and that's what the district leadership team does. It has to work out what's in the best interest of the school district as a whole. While I'm sure everybody advocates for their school, you still have to, you still have to look at the fact it's one district and these kids are all going to be in all three schools at some point, hopefully. So.
Thank you, David. Anyone have any more questions at this time for, for Kelly? If not, we'll move on to, I'm sorry, does anyone have any more questions at this time? I will go through instructional support.
Good evening. We're in the section titled Instructional Support. I've taken mine apart, but y'all can find it, I'm sure. This is a very short presentation, but I'll elaborate a little bit on the position. We are currently operating with what you see here projected for next year. So we currently, and you know that any given day, the number fluctuates by one or two in the, the actual enrollment in special education. But as of this moment, right now, there are 155 students that we're serving. We plan to serve approximately the exact same number in the fall, given the projections that we have. Our incoming kindergarteners coming into us from Child Development Services identified, the ones we know about, we have nine and we're losing just about the same number at the other end in the high schools. So our numbers remain pretty safe and pretty stagnant. That's not to say that we won't have some move-ins and some move-outs, just like everyone else. We currently have and are projecting to have 15 special educators. There are five special educators at the elementary school, four special educators at the middle school, and currently there are five special educators at the high school. We have Ms. Bressard, Elaine Bressard, who's on leave this year. She is returning next year. She will be one of our special educators next year. We have one K8 instructional strategist, that is Cheryl Joyce. That is a person who is responsible for the oversight of the IEP process. She is the only teacher in the district who has administrative oversight and can participate in IEP meetings as an administrator. Ben Raymond is the team leader, the department head, I'm what you call, at the high school. And he has significant oversight of that process up there, but does not currently want to have, nor does he have the administrative oversight. So administrators are attending IEPs. We currently have 19 educational technicians. There are nine at the elementary school, seven at the middle school and four at the high school. We have four speech therapists. That's a lot of speech and language pathologists in our district. We have 1.5 at the elementary school, 1.5 at the middle school and one full-time speech and language pathologist at the high school. We have two psychologists in our budget, four days each. That shows here as 1.8. Two additional days of their time is currently and would be currently next year funded through the federal funds that we receive, the local entitlement. So that puts two full-time psychologists here, five days a week for each one of them. Dr. Alina Perez is a clinical psychologist and Laura Manuel is a school psychologist and she's also a certified board, certified behavior analyst or commonly known as a BCBA. Laura is on leave this year. She's contracted with us as a BCBA, 10 hours a week. She missed the month of January for family medical reasons. We have two full-time occupational therapists. One occupational therapist serves Poncove exclusively. The other serves grades five through 12. We have a part-time 0.5 projected physical therapist. That may wiggle a little bit, looking on our numbers, we're never really sure. At the moment, 0.5 would serve the children we have, but it may indeed end up being a 0.6. We're not 100% sure of that. But the funding, should that need to increase, would come from local entitlement, the federal funds. Special education currently supports 2.5 social workers. Two half-time social workers at the high school are supported by local entitlement. One is local entitlement monies and one is district monies. We have one full-time social worker at the middle school and a 0.5 social worker at the elementary school, supported through special education. There are, there's also a full-time social worker at the high school and a full-time social worker at Poncove, supported by those budgets. That team has become a very strong team of service providers who do support the social and emotional needs of all of our students, K-12. Social work services are available to any and all students. And you see the projection of the 0.5 director. So the conversation has been that the current position that I hold, and this is not about Jane, this is about a, a position. The current position oversees, as you know, special education, ELL, gifted and talented, also acts as the affirmative action officer. And Section 504 is the district Section 504 coordinator. The conversation is projected that the special education director, the title would change, would be responsible for special education and Section 504. The other duties, the affirmative action would move on to the business office and the HR person. And the gifted and talented and the ELL would move over to Ruth Ellen Bond, Director of Instruction. There is no intention and no plan for any of the responsibilities of the director of special education as she sits now or as he or she would sit in the future, being passed on to teachers. So the responsibilities are administrative that the director of special education would accomplish for the district, and so it would remain that way. Am I supposed to do something with that? What's this?
Job description.
I guess you're getting a sample job description coming around. That's okay. So there is a list here in your narrative that's provided to you about the services that special education provides. And we provide the full range of services here by main state regulation and in full compliance with those regulations.
I'm sorry, Jane, may I interrupt you and ask you to just repeat what you said about the responsibilities and how those change?
Okay. So currently, I am responsible for special education, ELL, gifted and talented, affirmative action, Section 504. That's five things. And then, you know, we throw in the psych and the social workers and all that, but that's just part of special ed, okay? So the projection is that the special education director will be responsible for special education and Section 504. And the rest will go to, the GT and the ELL will. And the rest will go to, the GT and the ELL will go to Ms. Vaughn, the Director of Instruction, and the affirmative actions go over to the HR person.
Can you tell us a bit more about when affirmative action, what those job duties entail?
So whenever there's a complaint from a staff or a student about harassment, be it sexual or just regular harassment, or a complaint from personnel about a hostile work environment, or a person is very uncomfortable and doesn't feel like going to their supervisor, often that investigation and that um, search for all the information to help us figure it out falls to the affirmative action officer. That means usually that it requires the person doing that to drop everything and, and devote days solely to that investigation, to gather all the material, talk to all the people, keep it as highly confidential as it must be, write a report which is given to the superintendent, and then the affirmative action officer is done with that, and it moves on then for the superintendent to act upon.
And are those types of responsibilities normally something that human resource officers are specially trained to do? It seems highly sensitive.
Yes.
Okay.
In my previous positions, I've shared that in the role, similar to the role I have here, along with our business manager in other districts. So that is common.
Great.
Is there any way you can characterize what portion of your time is, is you would estimate is allocated to those different responsibilities?
Um, it's never a daily equal opportunity for each one of those. So um, I can say that the number of affirmative action investigations that I've done in my tenure here are probably two, maybe three a year. Time devoted to ELL is, is not significant in, in that ELL is, is um...
Could you please explain what ELL is?
English language learners, second language, sorry. So that's one teacher and it's not a huge amount of time, but it's, it's highly important. And the kinds of programming and the kinds of instructional practices that we've been looking at together, along with each of our buildings, has been important as we've made a shift from a very much traditional pull-out program that she had been doing to a more integrated, inclusive model and a more supportive model of, of making sure our young people have every opportunity that they should have and, and aren't missing opportunities by being pulled out into a separate space. Gifted and talented, as any one of my colleagues can tell you, Ms. Hassan and Dr. Tracy can tell you, that gifted and talented have consumed a significant amount of all of our time this year and will continue to do so for, I suspect, a couple more years until people are comfortable with the process and the practices and are working on that. I can tell you that special education can consume my days one hundred percent of the time. It all depends on my responsibilities there. If they are IEP-driven and I am responsible for attending IEPs, then that is a significant amount of time that I spend that building administrators are not spending. I, at the moment, am solely responsible for supervising and evaluating special educators. And in my experience, that's not been my practice elsewhere. It has been a shared opportunity for a couple reasons. One, I don't live in the buildings day-to-day with every single person, and, and building principals do, and they, and special educators should be included as part of their faculty and staff in, in every way that everyone else is. And two, the, the, the good news about a special education director sharing that supervision is that a, a special education director has a background in special education. And so together, collaboratively, we could bring a very nice, supportive supervision and evaluation process, and that has been my practice in the past. When I arrived here, it was a very separate process and it remains that. So I solely, at this moment, provide all the supervision and evaluation, meaning the evaluation pieces. I don't supervise day-to-day who goes to lunch duty, but for the most part, all of that human resource piece I do. So as we look to a part-time or a half-time director, that supervision and evaluation process would be shared, and I understand the challenge of that. I also understand the joy of it and the positiveness of that for staff and having them be included and part of the faculty. They will sit there and shake their heads no to me, I know that. But um, I, I understand that that's worrisome to people, but the reality is, it's a great model and it works really well when folks are really collaborating on it.
Sorry, Jane, who did you say you would share the evaluations with or the supervision?
That would be the building principals.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And are the assistant principals with the evaluation pieces?
However it's happening in the buildings, the process is to be that we have three awesome principals and three awesome assistant principals, and so we have a lot of administrators, and it makes sense that we could share that.
So looking at the benefits, I definitely see benefits from having, you know, if you look at the cost-benefit analysis and say, okay, a benefit would be that even if you didn't have a half-time director, there could be a potential benefit from having building principals do supervision. So that's a decision that could be made or considered without, if it's a full-time or half-time director, because it, they're going to be doing more of it than they're not doing it now, so it doesn't matter who, who did it before. And, you know, I can see that that would be one benefit. What are some other benefits from transitioning supervision and evaluation to the principals? And contrast that with some of the costs of, you know, if someone's only in the district half-time, you know, scheduling to meet with them, you know, just to help us understand a little bit both sides of, of the supervision piece only.
So for the supervision piece, it, it, you might say to me that you would perceive that I do that part-time now anyway because I not landed in a building. So I am scheduling, I have just finished scheduling three weeks of back-to-back observations with people, and I'm running between three buildings to accomplish that, which is not tremendously effective of my time, but it's very supportive of their time because I say to them, you choose and you let me know, and then I show up. So in that way, I don't see that as any different for a half-time person because along the way, I'm doing other things as I went my way between schools and, and bump into folks and, and am working. The positives of that would be that we expect that our instructional practices are differentiated, just like our regular educators. All of our special educators have participated in all of the PD that's been provided for regular education, and we, we want them to be able to be in classrooms and to collaborate with teachers. And so to have principals' eyes on that is very productive, I think.
Um, I'm just, just wanting to be led through the, the IEP process since that's been raised quite a bit lately and from parents. So, so if you're dividing the supervision, who, who is the team? So let's say it would be, it could be you, or it could be you together, or would you definitely like break down the caseload? Would be, were you on one and principal on another?
So IEP teams are consistent, consist of an administrator, so that could be an assistant principal, a principal, or me, or a director, or it could be the instructional strategist that I mentioned, who she has administrative oversight. Then you have a group of teachers, special educator, regular educators, support personnel that would be needed for that specific child's service.
Okay. And then the administrator who is on that team may or may not, I guess depends, depends if it's you or one of the principals, has a background in special ed? Is that right? And, and how does that, you know, if they're the supervisor, how does that get played out if, if their background isn't special ed?
So for the IEP process, they all have had the basics in special education. They've all had basic special education law and basic special education practice that we've spent a significant amount of time together talking about and providing them time with Eric Hurlin, our attorney. So the IEP process really doesn't require an administrator to be a special educator because we have special educators in the, on the teams. It really requires someone that understands the process and can manage the process in a way that is productive, uses people's time appropriately, and makes sure that we come out with a, a document that we all feel we can reach consensus on. So that really doesn't connect into the supervision and evaluation process necessarily.
So a, as a follow-up to that then, in the supervision and evaluation process, would you be dividing your, your, your directs between a building administrator and this part-time director's position? And one person would take this number of people and another person would take another number of people? Or would you, in collaboration, be evaluating and supervising each staff member so that the supervision and evaluation is a team between you, the director, and the building administrator?
Well, I was just going to say, I'm going to speak to that a little bit, only because we're working on our supervision and evaluation plan, so that's still a work in progress.
Well, so does the supervision and evaluation plan cover special ed and ed techs as well?
Well, again, I mean, I can't speak to Jane's experience, I will say this is the first place that I've worked to where building administrators haven't had supervisory oversight for special education staff.
Okay.
So I, I think as Jane described it, it would be a shared oversight. We're talking about twenty-seven, twenty, a little under twenty-seven professional staff members, I think if I counted correctly, divided by six administrators, that's four to five additional people per administrator. Our evaluation plan right now is likely to call for, and again, we haven't made any final decisions on this, but for annual evaluation of probationary staff, every three-year basis, a summative evaluation for our continuing professional staff. So if you think about those twenty-seven people, only nine are really being formally evaluated in, in any given year on an ongoing basis. So, you know, the, the burden of that, I don't believe, from an administrator perspective, when it's part of your ongoing work, is going to be particularly cumbersome. So that's that piece, but I, model as well, really that collaboration tends to come around, you know, when you're growing new people, or when you're addressing concerns, then you are spending more time together, really working on that. And, and again, with continuing contract people, most of that is around their, their self-directed professional growth.
So I think a question for, you know, if you're, you know, we can go through the roles, but also as a director of a, you know, if it's, if I'm the special ed director, you know, there's a lot of different things I do, and, you know, I imagine they pull all the pieces together. So, you know, there's, you know, special educators, ed tech, speech therapists, psychology, psychology services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work. So I understand where building principals could help in terms of teacher evaluation, but maybe help me understand how a half-time position would, you know, be able to pull all the pieces together, given this is a very, you know, each student's needs are very different, and, you know, like I've said before, it's the most challenging part of being a school board member is understanding instructional support. So how, you know, how would a half-time person?
So I can share a direct experience, and I was a special education director before I came to this district, and my job included oversight for special education for approximately three hundred and fifty students from pre-K through age twenty-one, and who were receiving special education supports and services. It included oversight for English language learners, section 504. I oversaw Title I programming, and I also oversaw humanities curricula. And we had the equivalent of two instructional strategists in the district for that number of students. And so, you know, I didn't have direct oversight for supervision and evaluation of all of those teachers. I did collaborate with administrators for some of that supervision, but in a similarly high-performing district with the kids with a sa, a similar diversity of needs and similar challenges, I, I think we had pretty good capacity, working as a collaborative administrative team to manage those needs. And I, I feel again that we have a strong administrative team with strong backgrounds and experiences, a strong staff, and I, I don't see it as, as a significant impact. We have a building assistant principal who has had special education administrator in the past. All of our administrators have been required to take school law as well as special education law. All of them have had variety of experiences, sitting in and facilitating individual education plan meetings. Again, I think we have a competent group of people, and I'm not concerned, you know, I will say as a special education director, I can't think of a situation where there was a true immigration director was needed in that moment to answer a specific question that, that we weren't able to answer to or do the research for. Typically, if there's a situation when the director's not there, and you need the director there, you stop the meeting and you reschedule for when the director's going to be there. So I, I'm not anxious that we don't have the support and knowledge within our group to absorb this shift.
Jane, can you, do you agree with Meredith, and it was based on your experience in this district? Do you, do you agree with her?
We, especially the piece about the emergency, and, and it's, it's not uncommon to have someone say to me, we need an emergency meeting, and, and the, the definition of emergency is somebody's anxiety has reached something, and so there's usually a conversation about that, and we figure it out. But there are no emergencies that require a human being to stop everything they're doing, drop it and run to, to sit down at a meeting with someone. So the reality is that we try to be really thoughtful and practiced about what we're doing. We try to schedule things so they make sense for, for moms and dads and staff and everyone else. The challenge sometimes comes between the administrators, and, and the high school's a good example, where Mr. Carpenter in the morning spends his mornings with substitute settling, and Mr. Shed is otherwise engaged often in other meetings, and so many times I am the administrator that's there. But we do that in a, in a thoughtful way. We schedule that so that we're not just looking at each other every morning saying, who's up? I mean, it's not, it's not like that, so.
I, I guess what I was looking at was Meredith gave a good description about the talent she thinks people bring to the table, and then she mentioned the particular talents in this district, and I'm just looking for a, if I, if you were a doctor, I'd be asking, or a lawyer, I'd be asking for a second opinion. So I just want to make sure that her views correspond with what your views in your actual practice in the district, but at least for two years, now three years?
Three.
Three?
Three and a half.
Because she gave a long dissertation, not just about emergencies, but all kinds of support and all kinds of expertise.
Yes.
Do you agree?
I do. I do. We have, you know, K eight, Ms. Joyce, is an extremely competent teacher leader of special There are times when the regulations can be befuddling to any of us, and...
I've tried to read them.
She, we, we all try to read them, and then we go back and read them again, and then we go ask Cheryl. So that really is, you know, she is very good at that. She's very good at facilitating meetings. She's very good at drawing in people's expertise and making sure that everyone has what they need at these meetings. We have the same situation at the high school with our special educators. I, I would say to you that I've watched them grow wonderfully in their abilities to facilitate, not only facilitate the IEP... not only facilitate the IEPs, but to actually have them come to fruition in a very timely manner and in compliance, which is a wonderful thing. I guess Mr. Shedd could speak to his experiences facilitating his IEPs with the staff, as could Mike and Kelly, but people have really stepped up now. That brings up the question that is lurking here somewhere, sitting around in the back right here beside me, and that is, people are working too hard, they have too much to do, so.
We need a timeout because we have to flip this here.
We have to flip. Oh, so you should all stand up and wiggle. You've been sitting here a very long time. Take a break.
I'm gonna take that offer.
That's a good idea, thank you.
I don't need to sit down anymore either, thank you very much.
I hope one would be good.
This looks pretty pretty spread.
Padded chairs.
Oh, there's two of them.
I have my two ones.
That must be the old one.
Director of Instruction, isn't that what's the law?
Oh, no, that's the old one.
So we're gonna play Neil Diamond for the seventh impression.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, that's pretty good. I like that. Nicely done.
Is it done? Seems to be done.
He's got one more flip on that new tip.
Rachel's the end of his contract hours, he's out. It's gone.
Stop driving my car.
We're gonna start again in two minutes.
Poor mother fell down the park, broke her hand and cracked her head up. My sister was a valiant.
Yes, it does, as a matter of fact.
Cracked skull, cracked over. They sent her home in their car. She didn't drive. Oh, there's only one problem. They're crying in my front, well, I'm not in the front anymore. My sister is ready to go in there, choke my lungs. They sent her home with aspirin, no drugs, a splint. She had a cut in her, and she was uncoordinated, so she was basically...
I was gonna say, aspirin without obviously consent, but also with a head injury? It's like asking for...
And they didn't scan, they didn't do any scan of her head. They said, "Do you have a headache?" She goes, "No." And, okay, what plan is that acceptable? I mean, my sister...
Your sister took her back for a scan?
That's a good question. She's taken her into the doctor. My sister used to work in my mother's.
Don't realize. I don't care if she's coming out this way.
I know, I'm done.
Yeah, so...
They didn't call a cab, they didn't do any...
You're in that special position.
I called the police.
Get up and look, because then I'll start stamping and concerned.
We'll go ahead and get started.
So, this will be brief. I just wanna share a perspective as a special education teacher and administrator, and in the middle, I was a Cheryl Joyce kind of person. So I began practicing special education when President Ford signed the law. And at that time, special education teachers were very few and far between, and we all thought that we were going to fix it, and we were practicing what was called the medical model, where we would take you down the hall and we would do something. And we had no forms. State hadn't awakened to the joy of making forms, and so we made them. And we documented things on forms, and we had a great time. And then after three or four years of trying to schedule children around elementary school, wonderful things like art, music, PE, and regular classes, and then to schedule meetings around multiple things, and then to have meetings and make the forms, it began to dawn on us that this job required more than just the joy of teaching, which is what we all started in the profession to do. So special education has just grown since then, and it is a job that requires multiple responsibilities from educators. First and foremost, yes, they are teachers. But secondly, they have the same responsibility, the same weight of responsibility for teaching as they do for the compliance paperwork responsibility part of their job. And in this district, historically, for a while, you had strategist at your elementary school, strategist at the middle school, and one at the high school. When I arrived, the position at the high school wasn't working really well, and so we struggled with that for a year and made some changes. We worked on that at the elementary school for a couple of years, and it became evident that the kinds of responsibilities that a strategist were doing, that Ms. Joyce was really able to do the K-8, and that we needed the person that was in the special education strategist position to teach. At the same time, we realized that all of our special educators weren't at the same place of understanding not only the reason for the paperwork and the compliance, and there is a reason for it, and it's a good reason, but they also were a little bit confused about how to. So we've spent a tremendous amount of time with them on that, and we still do. We provide them with all the help we possibly can so that they can not only understand the process, feel good about the paperwork they're completing, and feel good that they are responsible and in compliance with that. Because compliance is as important today as it was the first year that we started special education way back in the early seventies. So, yes, I understand that the job they have has more than one hat. It's one of those baseball hats with three brims, and you spin it around. And so I'm teacher, I'm paperwork person, responsible, and then the third part of that is I'm communicator. And we heard tonight, some of us aren't doing a great job of that. That's okay, we can always get better at that, and it's not okay we're not doing a good job of it, I don't mean that. But the communication is two ways. One way is with moms and dads, but the other piece of communication that's hugely responsible on our special educators is with our general educators. And if they're not communicating with general education, then we are teaching young people in isolation the way I used to do that back in the early seventies, and that's not the way we want our children taught. So it makes somebody feel split, I understand that, and it makes them busy, yes, it does. But our teachers who are teaching first grade, second grade, all the way up through high school are just as busy. They're just busy in a different way. And so when the school year started, we made a very focused choice to have every special educator be responsible for ten students' IEP process, that compliance piece. As the year has gone on, as we predicted, that's shaken up a little bit. Some have seven, some have twelve. Nobody has an exorbitant caseload. All of our surrounding districts that we benchmark with, Cumberland, Yarmouth, Falmouth, and Gorham to some degree, Yarmouth being the closest to us, their caseloads, let's wrote this down, they have a twelve to five ratio, they're carrying caseloads, they have sixteen special educators and they carry a hundred and fifty students, so that's the closest to Cape Elizabeth with our hundred and fifty-five and our fifteen teachers, and our ratio's a little smaller. Falmouth, Cumberland, and Gorham all carry in the two hundreds, Cumberland up almost to three hundred students, Falmouth's two hundred and fifty-eight according to their director. So we aren't out of the norm here, we aren't, we're working hard, people are doing a great job. Can they do better? We all can do better. But the reality is that being a special educator requires some different activities than just a classroom teacher's responsibility, which is huge. Everybody's busy.
I'm curious, actually, you said we're not out of the norm. If I heard the math correctly, in just ratios of students with special ed, we're actually at the higher end, aren't we?
Higher end.
Better, good.
Oh, we have a great ratio here. Yes, we do. We should be very proud of that.
And it isn't just, and secondly, it isn't just a function of numbers, is you could have eight to one ratio but have eight really serious kids who need a lot, you know what I mean? It's also a function of the type of need.
Yeah.
And I assume that our relative mix of, I honestly don't know all the issues that we have, but I'll say autism, we have both the same issues of needs mix as Yarmouth or Cumberland?
Cumberland has a higher population of some very needy young people.
Okay.
Gorham does too.
If anyone, this is time to open up, if anyone has questions. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I heard some questions and comments about our overall staffing levels, so I had pulled out the 2011-12 budget, which was the budget before I came, but at the time, there were fifteen special education teachers in the budget, 1.8 psychologists, we've increased that to two, 1.6 social workers, we've increased that to 2.5, one occupational therapist, we now have two, two speech pathologists, and we now have four. So, you know, I know there was a concern that, boy, we're just cutting special education teachers and we're not looking at needs and we're not addressing that, but I think what we have done is flexed some of those other supports driven by our student needs. For example, speech and language services were an area that we focused on increasing because we were seeing a number of students with autism who had needs for pragmatic language support. So we have seen an increase in staffing, even though we've seen in that same time period a reduction from a hundred and eighty kids at the time that this was budgeted in 2011-12 to a hundred and fifty-three that we're projecting for next year.
Correct. To either of you, I'm just wondering, you know, understanding the, sort of the breakup of some of the roles to more than just you, more than to spread it out and the benefits of that, I still, I guess I'd like to understand why not reallocate, you know, the savings towards something that can just benefit even more the program? I guess I'm not understanding why we wouldn't just, okay, for switching, if we're breaking up the responsibilities to more than one person, therefore making one position half-time, why not still? Wouldn't it make it even stronger to keep that funding in other pockets of the same program of special ed if it's making sense?
Yes and no.
So, like I said, the savings we're getting in, I hate to put it that way, but in the part-time director, and given, you know, maybe the stretched thin component of maybe ponco families in particular with younger kids who need more hands-on, why wouldn't we use the half-time savings, half-time job savings, and push it towards maybe more hiring one more special ed teacher, for example?
I think you can look at ours investment, at our investment in preschool as, if you want to, if you choose to frame it that way, as a reallocation of savings. We know that early investment in education pays off at about a three to one cost benefit based on years of research that have been conducted in early childhood education, so I think in that sense, there is a reallocation of those funds to target our students with disabilities, and I know we're probably not gonna get to preschool tonight, but to begin providing services to them at a younger age so that they are more prepared when they begin to access services in the district. It's not, it's not a one-to-one, it's a shift. But again, I think it's a, you know, as we look at the adjustment of the director position and as the board considers that, I think it's a place where we have some capacity, and I do think that investment in preschool is a good move for the district.
Suzanne, I understand, the problem when people do this with budgets is you see a savings here, why can't we plow it back into this program? It's not an apple to apple. We have one pool of money. If we really need it, the real question here is, are we shorthanded in instructional support? If we are, then we'll go ask for more money from taxpayers. There's not a direct connection.
Which ties back to my earlier question with Kelly, you know, like, let's remind people that, you know, these decisions are made collaboratively.
Right, exactly.
So if, you know, so I would ask all three of, you know, the principals, are we okay with this? You know, are you okay with this? Because ultimately, you know, I know this comes not just from your two voices, it comes from all of the feedback, and so I do realize that, but I think it does come back to that point.
I agree. The question is, if we're too thin, we'll find the money in many places. We have to, that's right.
I'm sure there's lots of questions from different board members, you know, so I'm sure there'd be follow-up requests, I think getting comparables, I'll keep a list, would be great in terms of, as a school board member, we're in isolation, so I'll keep a list, but why don't we open up the questions now, John?
Oh, okay. I thought you were wrapping.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, no, 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 we're just getting started. But I just wanna say, I'm sure there'll be questions, so it's gonna seem disorganized, this is how it works, but, you know, board members should, there's a lot of different questions, issues here, so I wish there was an easy, efficient way to do it, but the best way is for each of us to ask questions, and I'll try to keep a running total of what I hear as follow-up or additional information questions. So John, do you have a?
Well, so, yes, I wanted to shift gears a little bit from the director position to the staffing, which Meredith began to do by pointing out, what I noticed too, and if you look at the long, the longer-term history of staffing and instructional support, that there's been some significant investment, despite declining enrollment and instructional support, some significant increases in the various different staffing positions. Nonetheless, we compare budgets typically this year to the year before, and there are reductions in staffing. So can you just directly address that issue of how are we going to meet the needs of the students as defined by their IEP and also by our ambitions for them and our central goal of closing the achievement gap with the staffing levels that are proposed?
So at the high school this year, Ms. Bressard went on leave, and that left an opening. And we looked at the numbers and quite frankly, weren't sure if we needed someone or not, so we waited a little bit. Then we decided we needed someone, and we advertised, and we found no one. So we filled that position, that opening, with a .5 literacy specialist to work not only with our young people in our special education setting, not as a special educator, but as a literacy specialist, but mostly to work with our regular education English teachers, and since then, that person has branched out to other content areas. So the number of young people that we had at the high school to start the year, that we had planned on having six teachers for, we had five, and we served, we were fine, and we remain fine to this day. The middle school is the school that started out with five teachers, and then one of those teachers succeeded in landing a nice administrative job in another district. So, you know, that wasn't a great move on our, we missed her, but the reality is it was a great opportunity for her. We advertised twice, we interviewed twice, we found no one to fill that position. By the second interview team, Mike and I and some regular educator and special educators met with the candidate that we had, and made a decision that it didn't make sense to bring someone in, that quite frankly, all of the students were being served, caseloads were not huge. And so since that person left the middle school, we have reassigned students to different special educators, and they have been served all year. That's the same number of students that we're anticipating for next year. So the reality is that what we have right now, all... So, the reality is that what we have right now, all students are being served. And there isn't a need to fill in another person. And I don't know quite how else to explain that.
I guess what he's asking is, are they served well? I mean, are we providing a good quality?
Well, now, we're going to, I'm not gonna dive into individual personnel issues or individual children and some of the things that I as well heard tonight. What I can say to you is that I don't have any, any special educator working with more than three or four young people without an educational technician or two there. I can tell you that we have speech and language pathologists and occupational therapists in the same room with special educators multiple parts of days. So, are they served well? I believe they are. Do we have services that overlap? Yes, we do. Do we have teams of people that are working on behalf of some of our more needy young people? Yes, we do. Do we have some young people who simply come for some support in a study hall? Absolutely, and they're receiving that support as well. So, I wouldn't have suggested this. And I wouldn't have suggested by any stretch that we would reduce the number of special educators if we needed them. I worked very hard to get the four speech and language pathologists into this district. And that is a huge, in my opinion, huge accomplishment for our children, K-12. Communication and the ability to communicate, to function, once one goes on, no matter where they're going on to, whether it's from kindergarten to first grade or from twelfth grade to the adult services, if you can't communicate in today's world, you're in real trouble. And we have discovered not only our young people with autism, but some of our other young people with other disabilities, be they emotional or significant learning disabilities, are having difficulty expressing themselves in a way that is going to help them be successful in the world. So, I know that four speech and language pathologists is about three more than another district this size might have. They probably might have one and a half. But the reality is, we weren't serving our children well with speech and language services, and we are now, in multiple ways. It's not just pull out, come sit with me and we'll talk. It's in classrooms. It's where the world is happening that they need to be working with the young people. And that's what's happening with our speech and language pathologists. So that service has increased significantly. The same thing is with occupational therapy. We have one full-time occupational therapist at the elementary school. Wow. She can be in every classroom. She has some very wonderful opportunities to integrate and to share with teachers some strategies and skills. She's doing a great job with that. She also has some young people there that she needs to spend a significant amount of time with. And she can, because she's not running around the rest of the district. That's awesome. Another district would tell you, you only needed one K-12.
And if we, if we were to find through the IEP process at the beginning of next year that we had insufficient special education resources to address the student need, how would we deal with that at that time?
Well, we'd have a conversation. My, you may remember when I arrived, that there was some budgetary challenges and that the Office of Special Education carried two full-time secretaries. And we do not now have any secretarial support. And that was because the local entitlement, the federal funds had been allocated, stretched a bit too far, so we had to make some adjustments. Through the past couple of years, we have managed those funds really well. And we have now a significant carryover that goes forward every year. So that if we got to a place next fall where we needed another teacher, there would be enough federal funds to provide that teacher. So it wouldn't be that I would come running back to you all and say, oh, my gosh, you gotta find seventy thousand dollars now, or whatever a teacher costs.
Also why we created a contingency fund, too.
Yeah. We sort of hang on to that, though, for those young people that might need something really special. But there are federal funds that would be available to support that. So it's not a question of if you decide that this is what you wanna support and then all of a sudden, something happens, you don't have any, any way to go around that. You do.
Jane, maybe common, a common thread, you know, we have this listed, speech therapists, psychologist services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work, you know, common position, or maybe it's not a position, was, you know, behavioral specialists, behavioral therapists. Maybe, you know, we heard feedback from, you know, different people on this. Maybe it would be helpful just to, you know, how, what is our philosophy and staffing strategy to meet the behavioral needs of students? And, you know, how might have that changed over the last few years? Just to give us some context to assess different models and maybe, you know, just to help us, walk us through that area or those types of needs.
So, when I arrived here, this district employed a contracted service for about forty thousand dollars of an applied behavioral analysis young man who was a BCBA, that board-certified behavior analyst who came in from another agency, actually, a couple of days a week. And at the same time, we had some staff that were interested in learning more. So those, that staff began doing their coursework and this behavior analyst kept working. And there were a couple of other psychologists that came and went during that time and provided consultation services in addition to the two that we had. As those folks took their courses, this district provided their supervision, meaning we hired another contracted service to support them as they learned. We reduced that contracted service once one of our special educators attained the BCBA credential. The other two continued to be certified. One took the board test this summer and passed. One had not taken the board test. And that is the one that has left our position and moved on to the administration. So, at that point, one of our psychologists, beginning last year, full-time psychologist, is a BCBA. That's a full-time person here in our district. We have continued to provide some consultation services from other folks as needed. We have that flexibility because we have the funds in local entitlement. Our federal funds are available for that.
So, in this budget, looking in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and if they're not categorized as I understand it, behavioral therapist, strategist, you know, how many do we have now? You know, I just get there since there, the perception I have is there used to be this role and now this role doesn't exist, you know, based on some comments at Ponco. So-
The word behavior strategist does not exist. It did the first year I was here, as that teacher grew into the position and wanted to expand to be a BCBA. And that person had innate skills and some very good skills that she had learned. That position, that name went away that, after that first year, as people worked toward their credential. And so, right now, one of the two psychologists that you see, although it's listed as psychologist, is also a BCBA. So, we have a behaviorist in the district who serves children K-12. This year, she is, she's on leave, so she's only here ten hours a week.
Could you just review quickly what the role is for a behaviorist in the district? Are they in intervention with students or are they more in line with helping assess a student and their student's needs?
Great question, thank you. They assess and then they work with the team of professionals who work with the student. They may indeed do some work with the student.
But they're not there to intervene for emergency situations, are they?
Not usually, but historically, that has been the practice and the expectation. And therein lies our challenge a bit. You heard tonight that, yes, indeed, one parent was correct. I have just contracted with a person who comes to us specifically for young people with autism, but also is a BCBA among her many other credentials. And the staff, their hearts are great. And they said to me, so how is it we get the kids to her? And I said, no, 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 no. She works with the teams. She's here for us as adults to help us know how to work with the children 'cause we're here every day and she's not. And so, the real challenge is to have the skill set to know what to do and then have the skill set to give it away. So that my colleague, the teacher, knows what to do when I've walked out the door to do something else. Otherwise, we'd be hiring people who, all people who were behaviorists to just do with the children. And that really isn't going to serve us well, or children well.
So, I just, I hear frustration and concern from parents in the community that students who need intervention for behavior outburst or however you wanna characterize that on a, on a surprise basis on any given day. How are those students who need behavioral therapy being served well in our district?
So they all have a team of people. They don't just have a teacher. They have a special educator, they have a classroom teacher, a special educator. More than likely, an occupational therapist, a speech and language pathologist, and a social worker. And they have plans in place. And even the best-laid plans are not going to mitigate every single behavior. And so, a behavior happens and then there has to be a plan on how we're going to work through it and then move on so that it can be a learning experience. Those are frustrating times. There is nothing that will get anyone's attention quicker than behaviors. And nothing that frustrates anyone more than that. Because people feel, oh, my gosh, I didn't know what to do. Oh, my gosh, I felt so bad for the young person because he, she was not being successful. And that's hard.
And then, one last question on the behavioral therapist, 'cause it's a question that we have gotten several times. And I apologize for not being here for the meeting where you had a workshop around instructional support.
It's okay.
But one of the issues that also continues to arise is the difference between practices as they have evolved in what you do with a student who is in crisis. So if you could walk us through, I'm sure, one more time, if there is a student in an active crisis, how is that student treated in our system?
Well, we have a, the board has a policy on restraint. You all know about that. We all know about that. We have people who are trained. Meredith is the trainer. So we have a significant number of staff who are trained in how to work with a young person who's out of control, how to manage that, how to escort them to a safe place. That doesn't mean that it's going to manage the noise level. It probably won't. And it may not manage the disruption, quite frankly. There will be disruption as someone is escorted down the hall to a quieter place. Each school has a variety of opportunities depending on the spaces. No school has the deluxe model of separate places that can just be available for maybe-if-you-need-it kind of space. And I'm sure you've all heard about the space that was developed at Ponco, first for the English-language learners, and then there was a lot of movement over there because a young person really needed a quiet little space to be. And so they managed to pull that off. But we are no longer using what used to be the carpeted, walled, I think they were called timeout rooms, maybe when I got here. There is one at the high school, it's used more now as a lounge with some soft furniture in there for quiet time if someone needs to be there, but the door is always open. The middle school does not use theirs and the, well, in the elementary school, we removed the carpet off the wall.
Barbara has tons of questions.
Oh, sorry.
Just because I, you can't stand our angle. You're welcome. I'm sorry, Suzanne.
No.
It's just that we're like, we're being very patient.
Yeah, you are, you are, sorry.
That's right.
Your explanations are helpful, Jane, I appreciate that. I guess I have, first, an overarching sort of feeling about this and then some specific concerns. Because unlike a bunch of people at this table, I've held several of the roles you hold and I have a sense of what we're being asked to accommodate here. So, I guess my biggest concern overarching is an ask to have the leader of instructional support cut to half-time in a, frankly, a time of turmoil. There's, you know, your explanations are terrific and I get them in an academic level. But I think what we're hearing from parents, and from the moment I started to campaign, I heard loudly from parents and staff as well, who are town residents who happen to bump into me, is that this isn't working as smoothly as, as the words would describe. And I think the parents who took the time to come tonight and speak to that are extraordinarily frustrated that they're feeling that needs are being unmet. And whether it's actual or whatever, perceptions are what they are. And I'm a big believer in paying attention to perceptions. So, my worry overarching is, this is not the time to have our instructional support director go to half-time when there are some pretty loud, there's some pretty loud noise about things needing attention. So that's sort of my overarching concern about it. Underneath that, I would say that certainly the loss of the behaviorist, whatever Ms. Croft's position was, has had a serious impact, from what I understand from parents and teachers, on the ability to respond to kids in crisis, on the ability to provide appropriate consultation services. And that teachers are being pulled away from their normal teaching duties in order to attend to kids who are having meltdowns. And that it's happening in public places and that that's not a helpful thing for kids to have that sense of the whole world watching a meltdown. Whereas if there was a behaviorist K-8 within that large building, there would be a person whose job it was, that's what I'm very used to in all my years as principal and curriculum director and assistant superintendent and superintendent. There were people, and I worked in very progressive districts, who believed strongly in having behavior strategists as part of these teams whose job was to really keep kids integrated in their classrooms as best possible, provide support to the teachers, offer preventative services, but be that person when the child really is in crisis. Huge, huge issue for me. I think I'm concerned on behalf of folks, I've been to many, many, many hundreds of IEP meetings, and I have been, as a principal and as a superintendent, very happy to have a director sitting there when, you know, when there are advocates at the table, when there's some pretty strong demands being made about services, when we're being asked to confirm a certain level of services that we're not positive we should have to do. I think there's a huge level of confidence having a director present for, for a lot of those meetings, so I worry about that. I'm worried about, I have also, as both a superintendent and a principal, done collaborative evaluations with my special ed director around staff in the buildings. And I agree with that. The thing that hasn't been tried out here yet is this Kim Marshall model, which we had in Falmouth for two years, is very demanding. And in some ways, crushingly demanding, until you sort of get some systems in place for the ten or so to fifteen walkthroughs per teacher. Whether they're being evaluated or not, the walkthroughs don't stop. They're not supposed to, it's supposed to be an ongoing thing. So for any of our principals to walk in and do brief feedback sessions with special ed staff is absolutely appropriate. For them to write the evaluation on top of everything else, ultimately, in my book, is too much. So, I worry about that shift of responsibility until you've really gotten your model underway in this district. And finally, I'd say the communication concerns that a couple of parents have voiced, I think, needs improvement as well. And I worry there with someone only attending to those things. And I worry there with someone only attending to those things, half time could suffer further. I'm talking about some of the staffing changes that happened that were surprises to people. I'm talking about last year's budget called for three speech therapists and suddenly there were four without any sort of public transparency about that. I was at that meeting. I didn't raise my hand because I was new to that process. But I was surprised there was an explanation at the time. So I think overall, things aren't as cleanly smooth as your hope and dream are. And that's frontline teacher feedback, that's parent feedback. And I just think giving this whole area less attention next year than it has now is not adding value to the position or what the district needs. So there's not a lot of questions embedded in there. It's more like I'm really thinking about this and worrying seriously about the impact of your position going to have and about some of these other issues not getting the attention that they deserve. So I'll try to encapsulate that in some clearer questions so you can respond. But that, I just have to say that publicly, that's a deep concern for me.
Thank you.
I was gonna say that asking for affirmative action role, I would think that it would be a positive for our district for teachers here for you to step out of that role and for, not administrator to step out of that role, a human resource person to do that for a number of reasons. But, so I like that. I also like the move that I believe that, yes, teacher evaluation is going on and you're so right. Kim Marshall is intense, but what we've learned, he's less intense than the other evaluation models. So, but that's ongoing.
Where you live it.
I know, I know. But it's ongoing and I'm just one person in that committee. But I like the fact that administrators know all of our students. I like that special ed director and administrators are interchangeable in that process. What I was gonna ask, already administrators are going to IEPs. Is that true? And so that's a regular practice, which I would think for the whole environment, teachers, knowing all kids, administrators, knowing all kids, we're not segregated, but we're one unit, which is what we look for. And you guys have Jane Sell if there is issues. And now we have Rebellance Sell if we have issues. Are we gonna ask, can we Skype in IEPs yet or not yet?
Oh, we try not to do that.
Yeah, okay. So it's not a practice. Okay, okay. I was just checking that out. But, and then we have, when you said like Cheryl's position, sorry Cheryl, I'll point you out. She does the administration, the paperwork piece of it. I mean, I heard that in special ed, special ed teacher gets 10, has 10 or so, seven to, you know, average 10 students. But for the big, heavy paperwork and the callbacks and the meeting plans and the timing and that piece of it, is that the teacher who's managing that job?
Pieces of it. Cheryl's job is not to do everyone's paperwork for them, but she certainly is a great coach and a great facilitator of IEP meetings. She, as I do, both of us are happy to write the notes for people. That's a very time-consuming piece of what happens at IEP meetings. But teams should be collaborating on how to write IEPs and to put them together. It is not one sole person's job to write an IEP for the OT and the speech and language person and everybody else. They should collaborate on that. And that hasn't been as much of the practice as it needs to be.
And so this is, there are changes. You've been here three and a half years and that change is just happening this year? Is that what you said?
It's a change that we've been working on, but it's happening more this year. But it's certainly got a long way to go.
And then the one other piece I wanted to ask you was, when was the last time there was a, for like an affirmative action, if there's two to three a year, how are we doing on those? I know we can't hear anything about that, but this two or three a year, did we have that many beforehand? Is this increase or decrease? And how are we doing on? Because when you go in to check in affirmative action, you're checking on all these pieces. I mean, we're doing the due diligence is what I'm asking. I know we take every conversation that, every, all information that a parent says and check on it because I know that's our practice. Or I'm assuming that is our practice.
When we've received reports, they've been investigated and passed on. And sometimes those wind up being passed on outside for a variety of reasons. Typically, we try to handle them internally as best we can. Other administrators are typically involved in those investigations in some fashion. I'm aware of several, at least two in recent memory that have been conducted this year. I mean, that's fairly typical in my experience. Again, sometimes those are student to student. Sometimes those are staff, student. Sometimes those are staff, staff. But I don't see it as being any different than other places I've worked.
Are you asking more for what, how much time is involved in that?
I'm really, I guess I'm really asking for, because I don't want anything, there's no, you know, if there's an issue, let's address the issue. If there's, you know, we, as.
That's the law.
That's the law.
Exactly. Are we compliant with the law, I guess is the question I have. And do all parents know, I agree, and all teachers know, if there is an issue of discrepancy, the process that they go through?
So our affirmative action policies per se are part of our policy handbook. They're included in student handbooks. If you're asking specifically about that, they're all included. If you're asking about IEP process?
Well, yeah, you know, hearing that there's phone calls that aren't being returned, is that part of the IEP process? Is that part of?
Right. It's separate from affirmative action. That would be part, essentially part of the IEP process. If there's a concern that services aren't being provided, I would expect that those would be brought to the team and from the team to include an appropriate administrator, be that the building administrator or the director of instructional support so that those concerns can be addressed.
The, you know, I just wanna, I hear what Barbara's saying, but I also wanna check. I know where Lockside lived. I was here when we've made these shifts and I understand there's a difference and change is hard. And people's, students are the main focus, so.
I know it's running late, but, you know, I, just looking at, you know, director of instructional support, the savings or whatever you want to call it, the decline would be $36,235. And, you know, so that would be one, you know, benefit if you look at it that way. But if I weigh that against, you know, the complexity, the issues that, there's been some philosophical transition. There's obviously needs that, you know, we're, of course, we're trying to meet all student needs, but could we do better? Absolutely. So I just look at, that's $36,000 in savings. And then what are the potential costs? I mean, if it went fantastic, you know, we could say, well, we saved $36,000, but we don't know. So my, during transition, one might argue, well, let's see how some of these responsibilities, you can still transition them, but one could argue, you could do that while you have a full-time director. So if it works, it works. If it doesn't, all right, we're no better, worse than we were before. And, you know, it's always, you know, I apologize. I wish I knew more about special education. But, you know, ever since I've been on the board and, you know, this is a complicated area. And I just wonder, yeah, we have the $36,000 in savings, but all these areas that, you know, we always want to do better, you know, who's gonna catch all those, given the workload of the building principals? So I just think it's an area, a decision, you know, you, you know, there's some follow-up questions I have and I'm sure others have, but I really struggle, you know, yeah, $36,000 is $36,000, but there's a lot of work to be done on that. I'm mindful of the time, you know, you know, it would be helpful maybe for the board to, if you have questions now or if you want to forward those to me on some follow-up. Just, you know, it'd be great to get comparables for peers on caseloads. And then, I know this is hard, but, you know, 20 kids who need help, you know, with some basic speech, is totally different than 20 kids who have more severe needs. So I'm, you know, the numbers, if there's any way you could help us understand, you know, the, you know, 150 kids versus 150 kids, if, you know, if your mix is higher severity issues, just to help us understand, you know, how we should look at, you know, why 155 to 153, you know, may be different, so.
Can I just comment on that? That really it's going from 165, which was our projected number last year when we budgeted, to 153. So that's a difference of 12 students year to year.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think of next steps. So, Joe.
Just a real quick question. And I'm sorry, I'm tired, so I hope I remember what it was I was going to ask. But just in an overall philosophical question, are you making these proposes in, changes in your staffing responsibilities to save the $36,000? Or do you philosophically feel that the pieces that you are proposing to peel off and give to HR and the director of instructional support are better fit for those two positions? And will these changes indeed impact a teacher's day-to-day workload?
Philosophically, I believe that English language learners and gifted and talented are very well suited by the director of instruction. And I believe that affirmative action is well-served by HR. I feel that we have, separate the director conversation, I feel that we have wonderful staff to student ratios. And the director is proposed because it made a difference in the budget. And this is a proposal to you and you're making the ultimate decision. And I give you, I understand, it's very difficult. And I could argue for 100% this way and I can argue 100% this way. If a team is not gonna work together and support something, then it won't work. And if a team is going to work together and support a part-time director, it will work. It's not, I can't answer you, Joe, about what will a teacher see differently day to day? Because it depends on the need at the moment. There are some teachers that don't have a need to see a director very often. There are others who need to see one almost every day and for a variety of reasons. There are moms and dads that I can have meetings after meetings after meetings with and we can agree today that things are good. And tomorrow, they're going to call you and tell you they're not. And so that just is the human nature of the position and the work. And so I can't, I don't know how to predict that for you.
Could I just ask a question, Kelly? Just, I'm curious what your feeling is, you know, projecting into the future if this budget passed as presented? Whether or not you can, you have a sense of the climate, the impact of climate at Poncove might be? Like, do you feel confident that it could be managed in the way that, you know, as a team successfully? And not to put you on the spot, I'm just curious of your feelings.
Going from a full-time director of special education to half-time?
Yeah.
I think, I think you would wanna know as much information as possible. And that would be, I think there's a lot, there is a lot, there are a lot of questions right now, understandably, going from full-time to half-time. And I can't speak to the responsibilities of affirmative action. And I don't, I just think, like, getting talented in ELL does, I mean, good stuff. But I don't want to speak with Ellen's role either because I know she's wearing many hats as well.
I do, I do, too.
I do have concerns about the transition in terms of, for us as administrators, transitioning to a new supervision evaluation model and knowing, and you're in the committee. I mean, you know, and I know we're still not done with the work, but knowing, knowing just the current demands we have anyway, we're like probation, getting probationary staff evaluated, evaluation is done. And that's with two administrators doing it. It's still with coordinating or other things and really doing it well, really, really, not just like checking this off and going and.
Right, right.
So I think, you were asking about climate. I think it's more, I think everyone would wanna know just really transparency, what roles and responsibilities are, what's it gonna look, you know, just different scenarios and things would be helpful. What if, you know, there was a high knee thing and, Kate, I think you asked, what can we spec? I mean, you know, what would, you know, how would that look?
I guess more of a specific question would be, you know, we have the increase in literacy specialists and we have a full-time OT, I believe. But how, Poncove in particular, just because this is, this is the time, you know, the age where this is really intense. And I've been through the holes special ed system myself as a parent, where behavior strategists, or behavior, someone who focuses on behavioral interventions can really be useful at this level. And do you fear, or do you have a sense that there's fear amongst staff that that is not well-supported currently or possibly in the future?
Behavior strategists, I know when I spoke before about, you had asked me about the world language and I said, we had had discussions about that. I would say that behavior strategist is probably the hardest one for me to swallow in terms of us not have. We do feel a huge void there. Not because, not everyone is working really, really hard. But in terms of how the impact that it can have on, and we have, you know, students, and you point to all, I think we are at that level where it's early intervention. And it's not just, sometimes it does feel without, without a behavior strategist on staff. Sometimes we feel more in a reactive mode at times, more than a proactive mode when we had a full-time behavior strategist. Because a strategist doesn't just, and it isn't about just working directly with students. It's about working directly with staff and helping them almost that gradual release of responsibility with having, helping a team work together by helping a classroom teacher so that student can be successful in a least restrictive environment more. But that strategist has a real skill. And it's not that, it's not that our other specialists don't have those skills. I mean, they don't, I mean, they don't have good skills. It's just that strategist role is, can be a little pivotal, pivotal role. And it's unpredictable, not just with, if a student is coming in that's new, but also some, you know, if students who do really well and then sometimes they take dips, you know, and because of something that's, you know, occurring or just because, you know, something is up there. We can't, we can't manage in terms of coordinating that plan as tightly as we'd like to if it were, if we had the consistency of someone that can be in and out, have relationships with particular students and also with particular staff a little over time. I think we've been fortunate to have some really strong consultants, but they're not here all the time. And when we have someone on staff all the time, it's, things run well. And the contrast between when we have one. well, and the contrast between, you know, when we have done one, didn't, you know, I do feel that.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, we're not suggesting that this budget doesn't propose a reduction in the behavior strategist's positions. We still have a psychologist and a BSCS.
A psychologist is the B CBA.
And that's not changing. We're not, and the only reason why there's been a reduction in staff is the current one is on turn.
Correct.
Okay.
On the loss of Sonia.
Right. The loss of Sonia, and then the other, the other thing as far as.
Sonia, have you been here?
Can I make a suggestion? We've had a lot of questions from the audience. I would like to see Barbara put her expertise into listing some questions and then get some specific answers. We have, I mean, this is just muddled to me, and your answers, some of these answers are a bit muddled, and it's kinda hard to follow. If we had very specific questions, behavioral strategists, do we, you know, do we, do we still support that? Do we still have enough people here to handle that issue? Do we have, you know, how are you transitioning your, I guess what I'm saying, we have a series of questions from the audience and from here, and if somebody could put them in question form and have you answer them, then we'd be a lot further along.
Thank you.
Yeah, my suggestion was that school board members forward questions to, actually be easier, just forward them to Meredith. And then, we don't wanna have those responses in emails, so forward the questions, and then our next budget workshop, we'll pick up where we left off, and that way those questions would be answered in a public setting.
I'm not sure, Michael's taking good notes, but we have a tape, and if there are issues that are raised, and, okay, you did, let's get them all answered. And that'd be the easiest, and it'd be easier for me to understand anyways.
So it's almost 10, oh gosh, it's almost 10:30, so we'll wrap it up. We'll update the other budget workshop meetings for the next item. It's March 17th, and if we add more budget workshops, that will be updated on the budget calendar as well.